Five meeting. The best time to plan a board of order, seven thirty P M. That would notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with section three D of chapter two thirty-one in public books in nineteen seventy-five. Commonly known as the sunshine vote. Roll call please.
Paul Meyer.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson. Grace Ann Kelly. Ryan Methinger.
Here.
Jose Maderas.
Here.
Philip Fallon.
Here.
Brad Nelson.
Here.
Ken Shalane.
Here.
Jeff Paletti.
Present.
He said, just mute on Jeff.
You didn't hear me?
Can you unmute?
I should be unmuted.
No way, maybe we're just not here.
I can hear him. Can you hear me? I'm here. Hey Ken, can you hear me?
Something's. Come on, yeah, come on.
One, two, three, A, B, C.
I hear you. It's not, it's not problems on your.
Lou, can't hear you either. Because.
Lou is on.
Turn the volume, the volume's still down. It just lasts for years.
Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
I hear you fine, Lou, so it's gotta be on their end.
Yeah, you're perfect.
Say something, Jeff.
One, two, three, A, B, C.
Change the speakers on you, yeah. If you go there, so we have the speaker, one of those.
One, two, A, B, C.
Same the system. Jeff.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
All right, perfect.
Are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, it's there.
Well, not there, but here.
Steve DiLorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald.
Here.
Scott Wilhelm.
Present.
Michael Davis.
Here.
And.
Here.
With my flag, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and just as for all. All right, with the septic system. We have a request for five hundred Charleston Road. Block thirty-eight, block three point oh one.
Thank you very much.
Who's representing the applicant?
Yes, my name's Erica Bush, representing the Sullivans. They are at five hundred Charleston Road. Um, in Hampton, and uh, they are selling their home. They uh, had a septic inspection and a path that failed the inspection due to a saturated field. So on September eighteenth, I went to the, to the house and we did soil logs. And I prepared a plan which meets the requirements of the state code in all respects, except for. There was modeling in soil log number one, which um, indicates a saturated zone. In this situation, it's not a regional water table. The water doesn't come up because uh, and it's also not perched. It's not that the water can't go down. It, this uh, zone of saturation is a hanging water table. So um, so we need a waiver from the board for that. Uh, that's what the code says, the local authority needs to approve this.
Tom, you looked at it?
We looked at it and so with the hanging, hanging water gene is that. There's a lot of those. The layer of soil that is less permeable than the soil underneath it. Okay? And Eric, in fact, it won't notice any of this. Um, so it creates that issue, but once you get through that layer, you get into more permanent soils. The system is designed as a uh, soil replacement system, it is not a mounted system. It's immediately down gradient of the existing failed system. Uh, so maintains gravity flow, there's no pumps or anything required. Um, the D E P does have a provision uh, that allows the administrative authority, in this case. Board town, township, to allow that design proceeding. Otherwise, it completely complies with. Um, the septic regulations and township uh, requirements and so forth, so I would.
And there's also no expansion.
Yes. It's a four better.
Yes.
Showing this is a two point six seventy per lot.
Sounds about right.
Good sell. That hurts you to learn. Uh, talk for week one six, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and my letter basically states the same thing that this discussed.
In the county.
And it supports, it can initially all applicants submit the Hurry County Health Department, the health department ways then. If everything is, is in accordance with state regulations and township board, then they get their. However, if there's never anything leave, then the county issues a letter. The first matter to the township to take action on. And that's what the report.
There was no definition of a hanging zone of separation or uh.
Saturation.
Separation on, on YouTube, on uh, Google, so. Is, is the septic system go underneath this?
No, it's um, uh, the hanging water table is, you might think of it as like a sponge.
Yeah.
Um, the sponge will take water until it finally gets so saturated, it'll start to drip out. So the soil is not as permeable as the underlying soil.
Right.
So when it rains, it gets saturated and it will hold the, the, the moisture of the water until it finally will release down to the lower soil. And when it's saturated for a long time, it models, so it gets gray and bright orange. So when you see that, it's either a regional zone of saturation where the water comes up. Or it's a perched where the water can't go down, but in neither, and it's not neither, either one of those in this case.
Right.
Because if it was regional, the whole thing would be modeled. Uh, and if it's perched, it, you'd, you uh, you'd have the modeling above this uh, impermeable soil. And there isn't an impermeable soil. So they call it a hanging water table for lack of.
Right, so the laterals, are they in that?
No, no, it's all gonna be replaced.
Oh, so everything's.
Yeah. It's just the way described in modeling, basically.
Yeah, okay.
That sound right?
Yeah.
Basically, they, they all done back with sand, but it's. Yeah, 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 I just.
So the, yeah, the soil, it's closing that hanging position will be.
That's why you need a full um, fill enclosed.
Right.
So that, you know, if you get any sideways, you don't run off, it would, won't reach out.
Right. I got that now. Any other questions? What we're doing is accepting Tom's, Tom's letter, so you're both, you're accepted, our code twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Meeting from, being a free engineer. The move.
Okay.
Or is it, uh, do roll?
Paul Meyer.
Yes.
Jose Reyes.
Yeah.
Ryan Methinger.
Yeah.
Jose Maderas.
Yes.
Philip Fallon.
Yes.
Brad Nelson.
Yeah.
Ken Shalane.
Yes.
And Jeff Paletti.
Yes.
Is that what we needed, eight? Scott.
You have one, you have. Judy Nelson, Grace missing, so you have two, you can have two alternates, you have two regulars missing tonight.
All right, so one, but how many do we need? One more, Steve DiLorenzo?
Yeah, you have nine member board. I don't know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for taking this application.
Just a really quick follow-up, I don't think this. Gets a resolution, I think this is something want to get a letter from the board to the health department would suffice saying that board took action tonight. And has no objection, otherwise, because I know they're, they're gonna wanna replace their system or something.
They're closing soon. All right, thank you. Good night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Public here, block thirty-nine, block twenty. Two stoneville plane. Application twenty, one, five, oh, three, P, next. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to open it up to the public to a panel on agenda.
Certainly, wasn't there?
I.
Be like this.
Can I just ask a question about uh, block thirty-nine twenty?
No.
No, not.
That's in the hearing.
Huh?
That's in the hearing.
Yeah, I know, I just didn't know if I could ask a question, well, okay, that's fine.
No, well.
And can you all, huh?
Well, plenty of time.
Okay, and then the informal conceptual review board, that's a site plan or?
That's. That's a.
Variance or?
No, no, this is a uh, it's a. Bottom, the bottom assessment issue.
Oh. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Nick, nobody else? No, nobody else? Yeah, but people. The roots.
Second.
Or the better.
I got it.
The professionals per block thirty-nine, block twenty.
All right. Everybody. Uh, my name is Kyle Porle, with Porle Legal, located in Montclair, New Jersey. Uh, and I'm here, and definitely applicants for uh, two stoneville plane, uh, who are seeking approvals of all the single family. Uh, the property is located, like you said, in block thirty-nine, lot twenty, uh, and is in the mountain residential zone, which, as you all know, it does permit uh, single family homes as permitted uh, personal uses. Along with this single family home, they look for a few other things, uh, associated underground store water management system, the septic tank, the septic disposal field, a water well, a retaining wall, and then some outdoor lighting and landscaping to go along with, with the property. Uh, there also are a few bulk variances, and we have our engineering expert who's gonna get more into the uh, weeds with those variances. But I did wanna note that several years ago, there was uh, a separate application for single family home on this exact lot. Um, that was ultimately approved, but a lot of our bulk variances overlap with theirs, and as you all probably saw in your site visit, it's a bit of a strangely configured, configured lot. Uh, that even though it is five acres, it's fairly narrow and pretty deep, so it's, it's hard. To go within the D E P approved areas and not trigger some of the bulk variances. Uh, but again, we're gonna get more into that in a little bit. Um, kinda give you a timeline, this is how we got here, so the application was submitted earlier this year. Um, was then sent over to D E P, they did their review, made some comments, the plan was adjusted, uh, then that's been now resubmitted, and is what you were all looking at here today. Like I mentioned, we have one, one witness, Adam Kendall, who's gonna talk about the engineering. Um, the intention is it'll be him, myself, uh, and. I should suffice, uh, but if there's anything that comes up that either myself or Adam can't answer, uh, the applicants are also here and are willing to be sworn in, and is there any, any other questions? Um, a few notes before I call Adam up. Based on comments in the letters and just kind of general housekeeping. Um, again, as you probably all saw in your site visit, there's a bit of a funky kind of bunker and tank in the back. Uh, that has been there for decades, as far as we know. Free, far removed, you know, if you're pulling up the property, it's actually hard to even see it's back there. Um, D E P was not concerned with it, we don't think it impacts us, so again, it's not part of this application in front of you, but. It's hard to miss if you're walking the property, so I at least wanted to bring that up. Um, I also know there was some, some comments about the access. Um, on the deed itself are uh, access easements to, to the property that should be more than sufficient for uh, get it to the property and do another thing we need to. Excuse me. Um, I also know there was some concern around the Highlands exemption. Uh, what was submitted before you is actually the Highlands exemption that went with the single family home that I just mentioned, uh, that was from a few years ago. Uh, we are of the belief and take the stance that that actually does still apply to us. Uh, you'll notice that they give some wiggle room within that approval. Uh, we are still well within that, and Adam will go more into the, to the exact numbers of that. Uh, but I just wanted to put that out there that we're still compliant with what they approved, uh, and therefore think it, you know, is still supervision. And this was all part of the D E P's review as well, so um, wasn't raised by, by them. Uh, and then the last thing I wanna mention is just, I know uh, this property has been vacant for quite some time, it's fairly wooded, uh, and. Nobody loves to take down trees where not necessary. Um, we will obviously, as we would with any project, comply with any tree removal or instances of town. Uh, but in addition to that, what I wanted to kind of emphasize is, it's actually the, the wooded nature and the ruralness of the property that attracted the, the applicants to the property in the first place. So you'll see by way of the application that they've done really everything they can to mitigate the amount of trees that are being moved. Uh, as well as adding their own addition where escaping. Uh, we are morally confident that the existing properties around it are, uh, they're such a sufficient natural buffer already that they really won't be impacted, and the areas that. Might be slightly impacted, uh, they're intending on adding more shrubbery and green giants and, and things like that. So again, I just wanted to kind of preemptively say that uh, is the wooden nature that, that really drew them to in the first place. So with that, I'd like to, to call uh, our engineering expert, Adam Kendall, and.
I'll just take it, two things, uh, you verified the proper notice.
Yes.
Okay, so you're more than so jurisdiction, and um, and you start off by uh, marking his C V as exhibit A one, soon as we're. Proceed.
Good.
Quicker.
A one.
A one.
Okay.
And we can write, we can write it on there if, if you'd like, if you want to keep everything.
Then, yeah.
Okay, the application they were, now I'm sorry, the A two.
Perfect, all right, so officially, I want to.
Yeah, good, good.
Uh, I don't wanna yet come up and all.
This time, yeah.
Good evening. Uh, Adam Candil, uh, representing the applicant. Um, I am a licensed civil engineer.
But this is before?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you swear affirmant in testimony of giving this matter would be the truth and best of your ability?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And state your name and spell your last name.
Uh, my name is Adam Candil, last name spelled K A N D I L, uh, licensed professional engineer. Um, and uh, license is in good standing, and I've presented it in front of various boards across the state.
And what we've marked as exhibit A two is that a current C V for you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, does it truly and accurately summarize your engineering experience?
Yes, it does.
Have you ever been offered as an engineering expert and rejected?
Never.
The chairman's not pretty bored, what they wanna do, but I would recommend based on his C V that he be accepted as an engineering expert for purposes of this application.
Do members have any questions?
Excellent.
That was difficult.
Um, should I stand by the board or is here okay? Uh, just for the microphone, would you guys like to have me if I'm here?
Uh, I mean.
Pretty big. Then right here.
Oh, yes. All right.
It's matter of what you do with somebody's nothing there.
Jeff, can you hear online?
I can hear, I can't really see, but that's, I guess I've got the plots, so.
I'll describe as best as I can.
Hey, sorry. Yeah, see, I'm this.
I'm not here for that.
I like that.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all right.
That's fine.
Uh, so yeah, the system of the property is known as two stone, um, two stone broken. And uh, it's firmly situated, all the story broke. And it has to be.
Sorry, I'll try to limit the interruption here. Can we mark that as A two, so the record's clear that we've got a blown up site plan as exhibit A three?
Yeah, the top plan that is uh, that is uh, C zero now that has been submitted, you will mark it as A three.
Thank you.
Uh, the property is situated um, between uh, Ludlow, Lud, Ludlow Station and Rocky Lane, uh, Rockyville Lane and Constoney Road Lane. For those that, I know that, so the board have done a, a site visit, uh, the property is four point nine three acres. Um, or discussion, I'll call five acres, but it is a, we are requesting a variance as it is, four point nine three, or five acres is required. Um, furthermore, there's other variances that we're also seeking tonight, um, and that is also for um. The minimum lot width where a hundred and eighty-seven point five is required, whereas a hundred and seventy-six point six two is provided also on the minimum lot frontage. Uh, we uh, we have uh, two hundred and fifty foot is required. Uh, we're showing a hundred and seventy-six, but it's also on a, on a, a shared driveway, um, so we are looking for a frontage variance as part of the site patient. Uh, we are meeting the, the rest of the full uh, requirement, so we're seven, we're a front yard of seventy-five is required. Uh, we are a hundred and twenty-one point seven nine, uh, rear yard a hundred is required, we are three hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, point one five feet, uh, side yard. Um, for one side, it's fifty, and for both sides, it's a hundred, we're fifty-five point one on the one side, and our whole side's a hundred and ninety-two point nine seven. The maximum building height and stories, two point five, we're also presenting two point five. Um, the maximum height is thirty, um, and we are presenting thirty to be under. Um, my site plan says twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-three, but you'll see with the architected, uh, we're at that thirty, so that's just. For consistency, we are proposing thirty, uh, and the maximum lot coverage by buildings is ten percent, and we are proposing one point four four percent. And the maximum lot coverage allowed is fourteen percent, and we're proposing three point eight percent. Um, and as you can see at the loaders, more bulk requirements, building coverage, and there's also impervious coverage that. This property could enjoy, but because of the fact that there is a repairing buffer, and we're within. A three hundred foot repair, that is, uh, that would be based off D E P requirements. We have essentially designed the site to the, the minimum disturbance possible, and even impervious possible. Um, and we, we know that there's also a variance that we're seeking as uh, uh, from the township, which is also the uh, steep slope and the critical areas. Soaps that are in the township ordinance, but above and beyond that, we also had the D E P requirement, so we first came in front of this board. And then put the brakes on, went and obtained our D E P approval, uh, back at the end of July, I think it was July thirtieth. Uh, so we went and got the D E P approval from flood, uh, flood hazard areas, which essentially is, as you can see on the site. This is the one hundred and fifteen foot buffer, this is the three hundred foot buffer, which there's no way to get out of that buffer. Uh, and we, as best as we can, we at least respected the town ordinance, um, the, the ordinance and the setbacks, the municipal setbacks. So we situated the house based off of that, and we went and solved the variances from D E P for repairing uh, buffers in front of hazard area. So um, essentially, our, essentially. Whatever, and even when it comes to the trees, when it comes to all disturbances, we were looking to do whatever's the minimal uh, disturbance that we can do to physically put a single family home. And the associated driveway and the septic tank, as you'll see, and then um, the, the entire site is wood. Uh, completely wooded, so the, the, the site enjoys a natural buffering around it completely, with the exception of the shared driveway. Where in that area, where we're showing our development other than the driveway, we're proposing some uh, landscaping there to further buffer and to screen the property. Uh, which is really a private, a private driveway that is only, there's probably only, it's so it's four, four homes. There's probably only two, no, three homes that pass us on their way up, that would, that we'd be screening to them, and they would, they know that we're there. Um, and it would just be the buffer along that drive. Uh, so that's the uh, that's the main. Portion of the application, um, and I can go into some stormwater management, uh, like we go, can there is there any question on the existing site or? The general proposal, we've gone on to the stormwater management septic design, and would I, should I be discussing the septic here, or would that be further discussed that, another area, that'll be discussed?
That's all.
Okay.
I do have some questions. You know, we, you know, all questions now, if we can, if we can see or if I have to open to the public. Well, okay. What he just said, said, do we have any questions as to what?
Maybe it'd be better if you presented everything.
Yeah, that's.
So, okay, so you're. And here's a. You want to, so this is existing. Which uh, we can see the, uh, so. There's a match line, it's a two page existing condition, you have the topology down to the uh, roof. Um, completely down to the uh, to the roof. And it's three hundred foot. Uh, vapor, it's varying core, and a hundred and fifty foot is the maximum that you could enclose within there with that. And now just moving on to um. So, for record keeping, this is C O four, which is gonna be exhibit A four, is that correct?
Yes. Unless you're gonna mark double things, exhibit A three, or four, ball sheets, we can do.
Ball sheets?
Sorry, that's why I'm there.
Okay. So just going here on a, a C O four, which is a breathing, uh, waiting range in the solar time. Um, essentially that helps us level with. The uh, shared driveway as we approach, and then on the backside, as you can see, you can see the photography falling down towards the, the brook is where. Um, the, the, the backside, where we get to that two and a half story building in the rear, as it steps down to the uh, to the basement, to the garage. And the first floor, we're essentially at grade level, at high level, when you come down the, the main driveway. And then in the rear, it falls down to the um, the cycle of down to the uh, to the basement elevation, and then. Um, to the, to the north, um, on the sheet to the right is the septic disposal field, so we do have a gravity system, uh, septic disposal field, uh, gravity system. Um, and we're feeding into it, and the uh, requirements, we're meeting the requirements of the uh. The requirements for the uh, six, uh. The six family health. But seventy family one? I did not, sorry.
That were better.
Yeah. I was about to get in trouble. Well, at least I got the neighbors to open their ears. So uh, yeah, so we are uh, presenting with regard to septic, the septic is designed based off of a. Design flow of a thousand one hundred gallons per day, and um, and the septic, uh, the septic tank is required one thousand seven hundred and fifty, we're moving closer to two thousand two hundred and fifty, um, tank. Um, and um, so that's with regards to the septic, um, tank, and this is the disposal, so even part of the D E P process. Is every square footage with regards to the house itself, and the septic is required that we uh, is required that we account for that square footage of any disturbance there apparently, which was a. Pretty, pretty rigorous processing going back and forth, um, you know, even the stormwater management system, which is the drywall, so on the low part of the site, we have a drywall. Which needs to maintain at least fifty feet from the disposal field, then we have the disposal systems. And then it's gravity coming to the disposal system to the north of the site, and then going to the drywall to the west of the site. Um, the, the uh, the drywall system is uh, designed to fully retain the um, the, the roof runoff of the building itself. Um, and it's adequately sized for that. Um, that's the drywall, that's in the rear. Um, and that's pretty much, um, it's pretty much uh, the application, uh, with regards to soil erosion, sediment control. We provide a soil erosion, sediment control plan where we are disturbing um, point four zero four acres. Um, and uh, which were. And the disturbance within the riparian limits is twelve thousand uh, square feet, point two seven. Twelve thousand uh square feet, point two seven five acres. Uh we did um, we did obtain uh permits. From the estate, so um the the hundred and count, hundred county soil erosion district, we obtained a permit. In ten three uh two thousand twenty five. And J D P flood hazard uh permit was seven twenty nine, two thousand twenty five. And the Highlands exemption, as Kyle was mentioning, um we obtained a Highland exemption that continues with this property, which was. Saw back in oh seven, uh ten, it was uh ten, seven, oh seven. Um and if you look at the first paragraph of the third page of that, it does say that. We understand that there might be modifications to the plan, as long as the Highlands is looking for the two thresholds, which is. The the quarter acre of impervious or the one acre of disturbance, so as long as those two thresholds are not surpassed, then they. They would um, if I accept this to be part of that original exemption and then last but not least, as you saw with the trees. We've designed to minimize as much as we can further beyond the township ordinance, but we do feel that this would at least mean. The exemption for the township removal exemption, which is section one oh two dash seventy nine uh being. Uh both for the home and the septic, uh tho- those are, that's the last thing uh over those to our application. And if there's any questions, I did receive the report from both the planner and the engineer of. Not sure if there was anything specifically that we should go through regarding that. Um, I did get the last letter I got from the engineer was the complete list now. Letter and I should fill another letter after that.
The board, board questions first. So. The board numbers and the questions this way. Okay.
Uh so could you clarify, you said five, six, seven families and then you never said what it was?
Oh, sorry.
That, that.
Uh yeah, so that's bedrooms.
Seven bedrooms?
Uh this is um. This is a. This is a seven, yes, seven is not.
Seven bedrooms and that septic system is adequate for seven bedrooms?
Yes.
So, y- you haven't touched on the um existing foundation that's there that says it's going to be removed, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and and also to add on to what Kyle was saying, there was a tank on site.
Yeah.
We uh not only. Not that it doesn't, it's not associated with our application, whatever is needed from the applicant to adequately close that with the health department. We would seek unnecessary pools to make sure that's closed in accordance, um it it seemed, it seemed empty. Uh but that's something that we would evaluate and if needed, we would seek a current from the health department. Um you know, to adequately close it and to scrap the metal, but to make sure if there's any. If there's any uh, any uh substance in it that is uh removed appropriately and then to scrap the.
Exactly, yeah, because it's, it's rusted out at the bottom, and so. You know, whatever is getting in there is getting on there now, um but you know, it's. Especially because it is within the the three hundred foot buffer of that stream.
Of course.
Really, which is, we know first of all what it that was.
Yeah.
Because you know, we we don't know what that even was.
It looked like, it it looked like it was a fuel source, um so.
Fuel source.
It's uh like oil, oil or propane.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
That's what the the container appeared to be like an oil or like a propane tank and then.
Doesn't look like, it didn't look like an oil tank to me.
But it's never been anything, there's never been as well as mine's properties that could be land.
Yeah.
So unless a neighbor, something like that at some point.
Yeah.
It's not.
Of course, it's a, it's an underground storage tank, so we we.
Well, I don't think it's above ground because it also goes below ground, I could, I couldn't reach down. Uh as far as it was, so it's, it does, it definitely goes down somewhere.
Yeah.
Um but yeah, that that that'd be real important to make sure that. That's I guess um adequate to be addressed.
Certainly, and yeah, we would certainly explore more than whatever necessary permits is required to. Abandon it and to get rid of it, we would certainly seek those perks.
Okay, when the removal of the existing foundation, what are you going to do with all that, that um? The cinder blocks and all that, the. It's concrete blocks.
So either, either they would, well, they would demolish it, either crush it or reuse it under the uh, you know, pavement areas. Or the the foundation area, um but that's probably the most likely scenario that is what they would, that's probably crush it and. Use it like says, like crush, you know, that makes sense, I agree.
Yes. As far as that uh hole there. Have you expected to see actually what it is and what it contains, because as you said, it might be oil. Has any of that seeped out, has any of that been? Looked at?
Not, not that we're aware of, um you know, we we just saw visually, we did not explore inside of it, but we would certainly explore further.
And what I would just add and kind of reiterate from my opening is that, so D P was obviously out here. They were not concerned with it, it was not part of the, you know, the area where the home was being built, it is. We would say sufficiently removed from.
Oh, yeah, I would say. Board's concern here is the, the property's under contract. They don't currently own it, it's still under contract, so to protect them. That should be addressed. Even if, even if you're saying it's not part of this application.
Right.
It's part of, you know, they're looking at being members of this community, they're looking at the possibility of a liability there. So it is, it's, it's of your own, you know. Best to find out about it.
Absolutely.
You know, current owner, again, it's the, the, the previous variance from two thousand two has been, been there a long time, I guess. But I would definitely.
Yeah.
Have that um.
And and we definitely appreciate it, we, we've discussed that. Um what I would just say is like Adam said, that if, you know, we would follow appropriate steps as needed, if if we got to that point.
Yeah, I mean, may even want it to be done prior to purchase, like maybe that might be something that we might.
Well, Kyle would, would, you know, what was it just said, it's, you know, what is it, I mean, maybe take a sample. And just, just, just have it analyzed, just to verify, and it could have been water hole intact, it could have been some sort of the, you know.
That could be an abandoned opening to a mine.
There's a lot of history in this town, so you, you just don't know, but, but yeah.
And and just with regards to D P having been out there, chances are you had D P freshwater wetlands folks out there. Who go out there with their blinders on and aren't necessarily looking at things like tanks and stuff like that, so just, you know.
I agree.
Um, on septic.
Hmm.
Um. One of the items in our, in the zoning clearance is having an alternative area for a septic. So that being said, has this been per tested already or is this a design without a per test?
Uh right now, it's just designed.
Okay, so it still has to be per, so this is where you're planning on.
Correct.
Permit it. You know, considering. Some of these limitations, part of, part of the town is to have an alternate area and because of the size. Of a seven bedroom septic and that disposal field is a, is a good size. Um. Could you testify where you see it could fit? Alternatively to where, to where it currently is?
Yeah, I mean.
I know I'm putting you on the spot, but.
No, no, I I appreciate that, um where we would alternatively be looking at. The whole bit works there and as far away as we can get from the repairing buffer, so if there is no alternative, we can look to go. More north, more northeast, um in this general area, sort of northeast and the other. Uh if needed, and then the house is. A little higher, but we we're looking to go a little bit. And it's not, um it's not much higher at all, relatively the same, but. The area that we would be looking is either where the grading is in the uh whereby. The post grading four fifty seven as far as that limit and then also to the northeast. Closer to the shared driveway, trying to be the alternative to try to stay away from the repairing buffer as much as possible.
Right, so. Like the old area would, would put it into that, that set that area significantly. Um.
That, that would be something else that I would encourage you to do before, again, transfer title. Yeah, because the soils and that one can be a little poor game. I did earlier previously, um where you have your septic. May not. More well, may not support that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um so you're going to want to have that tested and then if it is not consistent with actual ordinance or a D P regs. You'll be back here discuss the previous.
For a way of.
For a way, okay, so I would strongly suggest we got that out. Before there's a change in title and I would imagine this, this chair, that would be a condition of the.
A lot of closings have, have they verified perk prior, prior to closing?
Okay.
Again, just. Again, you'll be buying a piece of property that you can put a septic on. Well, you know, a much smaller septic, it's a little bit easier, but this being the size that, that, that they are looking for. It, it becomes an important issue for you.
I agree, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any questions?
The one question I've got is at the back of the house. Um. What is the max height with the basement going down there, because that looks like um you're going to need a lot of fill back there.
Uh the, the maximum height on the, on the, on the back side, um. So the. I know based off, when we did the calculations, based off the average grade, we're at thirty feet. Uh on that rear side. I'd like to say we're at thirty, thirty, thirty or thirty two with a thirty. With a thirty foot average uh height, I mean with the, with the average grade and the, and the overall height. On the backside.
If, if I look at sheet A four, it will shows the rear elevation. It looks as though we have the roof elevation, I saw it's a flatter.
Correct.
Uh the roof elevation is at five oh three point eighty three. And the, the rate below that is at four sixty eight eight three. But I believe we have. That's thirty five foot exposure in the air.
Oh yeah, yeah, thirty five, correct. Yeah, but yeah, we're coming off the average, yes, at least up the architectural plan. Correct, so on the, on the lowest point in the back area. Will be the yeah thirty five point. Five, five, five three or so.
Can we? So will that need a variance or?
Uh what?
Will that need a variance then, because that's going over our max height, correct?
Uh so the, the way the ordinance, my understanding is the way the ordinance is, it's based off of average, right? Which because of front legs, only going to be like a one or two, like a two story in front and then with the average. In the back, I, I think we meet the um, the requirement with regards to the uh, about the. The building height requirement for ordinance.
Well, let's mark uh this architectural plan as a four things which consist of hill sheets.
At least I'm looking at. Does, does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, I guess, I guess, yeah, we, we've got to do, I guess, the calculations have to be done to be sure, obviously, but. I, I, I just remember standing down there at the uh, where you had it. Piped out thinking this is going to be a lot higher than uh I thought it was going to be.
What, what is, what is the grade from, from the, from the, the front of the house to the, to the rear?
The grade change, um so at the lowest point, so.
On percentage, because that's, that's how. That's how we have.
But there's a change, there's a change in grade of about eighteen feet uh from. The, I don't know, from like the front of the driveway. From the front of the driveway and the, the, the rock, even that same elevation because. We're almost holding that elevation with the water pushing to the north, so that elevation is about four, four eighty three. And the rear is that on the low, lowest point, um is four. Sixty five, the average grade on that back wall is uh or um. Like around four sixty seven, um and the grade that we were looking at on the left elevation. Is uh. Four sixty eight point three on the right elevation, even lower in the back at four sixty five point nine.
Which, which works out to one percent on that distance.
Um what percent on the distance? The house.
Working on it, okay. I'm not putting you on the spot, it's just, it's.
Yeah.
It's just, well, he knows because it's, it's part of your asking for a way or two.
Yeah. Right now, it's a, the, the, the front of the property or the actual house?
Are you going from, from basically your front disturbs? So basically from your garage going to the back corner that uh. Closest to your drywall is.
So I mean, if you average the front to the back, it's four seventy five.
Yeah, but you gotta figure out percent, so it's going to be, it's going to be the eighteen feet that he was talking about to drop. The eighteen feet over the distance that the house is on the line.
Right, but.
Which gives us, which gives us a percent.
And also that's, it's a little over eighteen percent.
Okay. That's, that's the number that we need because it's. Part of our ordinances is moderately constrained and it's severely constrained, so.
Yeah.
All right.
We've got a question about the, your painting wall.
Yeah.
So it's marked as a ten foot retaining wall. Uh does that mean that the? Final of the plan, that the drop off from. Where the house is to the septic, is that going to be a ten foot drop down?
Uh yes.
Is that going to need some kind of fence or some kind of a?
There'll, there'll be like a pedestrian guardrail over on, on the top side, because that's pedestrian traffic and then. Um as we, we get to the driveway area, it slows down to um. Slows down to nothing, but at the lowest point, there's probably about a. Eight, eight foot drop, so we would also have a guardrail, oh, the requirement would be. Of a particular guardrail on the driveway portion and then on the side of the house, we would need a um. Pedestrian there, a forty two inch high fence or railing and so.
Okay, and that's just regular building code?
Um that's. Uh that's, well, I know, I know R S I S uh building code, I think is also the same, forty two inches as well. Um I'm not as familiar with the building code as anyone did, site in R S I S.
So that, uh that guardrail, they're going to have to wrap all the way around to connect to the house?
Um they'll wrap around, yes, to connect to the house in the middle area, they'll probably die out at. Uh no, they'll connect into the house, correct? They would have to die into the house there, because even on the low side over. Um on the back of the area there, that is also retained by a table, so there's a drop also there as well.
And I know there was a note from Tom about getting structural diagrams for that wall, that that's. It's a pretty good wall.
Yeah. Yeah, there were, there was conversations of, and this is what was submitted and. How we're doing the other work, conversations of actually. Having that door in the back rather than go, this was something I was discussing with the architect. Rather going to first floor to go to basement floor, then that would alleviate and remove some of that. That height of wall in that area, um but that's now the conversation of having that. Where we're calling it the finish board, forty four point three three and that. Yes, that north door, that's coming from the steps of having that go into. The basement elevation rather than the first floor, then it would eliminate some of that wall and allow the back. Side of the garage to act as a retaining wall and then there wouldn't be the access walking around. Uh between the um, between the uh, you know, house as the, as the septic. So those, those were conversations, um that also came up in constructability. Um but that. But this is the first plan I've seen now, yeah.
So the board knows, I just did some very rough calculations and the average building height is like right at. So the board knows, I just did some very rough calculations and the average building height is right at thirty feet. Any other questions for the board for this witness? Any questions for this witness?
The only question for, for the witness, not for you guys.
Yeah.
Sure, so, um. My name is, is in well, the four twenty-four Charles Summer, can you point out where the septic is? I'm sorry.
Um, yes, the tank or the disposal here. This is the tank and that's the disposal.
And it, that's lower than where the house is because you said rather, right? So that whole thing is lower?
Yes. So the gradient, this is the high area and gradient goes that way.
But this was, this is higher.
So here's forty-three, forty-two, and then it goes, goes down until this is the low.
So this is higher than right here? And, uh, the, the dry well, is your, uh, what other, my understanding is you have to have them maintained, is that? D E P will come out and make sure this is retained or who's gonna maintain that?
Not necessarily D P, I mean, that's really self-maintenance, um. Uh, usually if you get, like, an operation, it's manual to the homeowner.
From the beach or something and that has to be.
Uh, what I would say is we'll be compliant with all requirements around, you know, upkeep and, and things like that, we'll, we'll make sure we're compliant.
And, uh, how many trees are being?
Um, we, we don't have the exact number, uh, but it's just with whatever's the footprint. Um, our, uh, erosion instead of a controlled frame.
To keep it. To keep that question as. Easy for you. Everything that is above, any tree that the house. So basically. He's permitted to cut any tree down as per our own ordinance, that's within the footprint of the house.
Where the yellow line was on it.
The foot, the footprint of the house is the entire septic system area, the tank and piping along with any driveway access. So it, it doesn't fall under. Five-tree minimum, and that's because it, it's a development, so if there's twenty trees, he's permitted to cut down twenty trees.
Okay, but I'm also allowed to ask him, but there's twenty trees on that. Um, there was another question and now I, how many square feet is the house itself? I have, here's the, the house itself.
You have the footprint of the house is three thousand and ninety.
We, ninety and the, um, so the, the, there we, so the two stories. All the way, the whole, the whole thing is two-story or just? The back or?
This helps me. But this is, if you're looking at some design, it's still a way of two-story, as it starts, as the clouds get moved down.
Yes.
It will turn into a true story.
Restored, that's what I, well, I, I, because it's pretty steep, so to, to me, but.
It's almost like a walkout, it's like, yeah.
So you, are, I know you talked about putting in, structuring in the front. What about in the back with the labor in the area you hear and that's gonna be? Who's gonna, they're gonna see.
And there is not, there's a, see, there's, uh, well, in the winter, there may be. There may be in the winter, but there's a natural part of it in that whole area all around the center. So if you go, even if you remove. This entire area of trees, you still have, you know, Jordan, natural, uh, buffering of, of trees there, I mean. Just like anywhere, it's not ever rancid or.
Can they think about it if it does become like? Very miserable to put some man's feet in your back and that being, because in the front, I don't.
I don't think they, honestly.
I didn't actually see need in the front per se, but.
Yeah, I think equally, whatever would give them privacy is what they will prefer as well, so if they, if. Certainly, in, in that instance, if there are. You know, uh, areas of visibility, they would certainly want to screen that as well.
Okay, and, and, can, did you, does the parents have come in the bathrooms?
Uh, the plans, uh, the bathroom.
Architectural plans always have. There's bathrooms on the architectural thing.
Yeah, I don't have it, so.
From counting six.
Six.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, seven or six? Seven, there, and one more question, so. So that, uh, that tank, that steel tank, would it, uh, be whom the applicant to have that soil tested? It, it wasn't need something that shouldn't have really be there?
Yeah, if, if there's any residue of substance that, that they feel would be like, uh, problematic or environmentally. Sensitive, then they would certainly test.
I mean, you might not know if it's been, had for many years.
What they, what they're gonna wanna do before, and I think. For the advice of the board too, is before even moving ahead fully and consummating a sale, they would wanna know that because that could be something that would be.
Correct.
Problematic to them.
What's in the soil there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Margaret Cohen, five oh seven Charles Down Road. Uh. Yes. Um, I know, I didn't understand, well, when was the variance, the D P variance for. Repairing and software, when did that happen? Is there a timeline for that? For the steep slope, when all of that happened?
Oh, that, that's separate, so there's, uh, D P is, well, uh, it's, it's a flood hazard area, individual permit. And that's for the repairing. And, and, and that's with the D P.
From three hundred feet, they reduce that to?
Didn't reduce, they allow certain disturbances, um, so this is the permit. Um, no, I'm just wondering if they. Date is seven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, and this is. Yes, yeah. Unless it was the permanent disturbance that is all. You know, they have, they identified.
All right, because, because again, everything's recorded here to, to know what you're reading or showing.
I'm reading a, a permit from, uh, the, um, the NJ D P, Department of Environmental Protection. Watershed and land management, um, and this is the, uh.
That's dated online.
Uh, so the, the approval date is seven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. This is the, the F H A individual, uh, individual permit.
And we'll, we'll mark that A five.
So in this, this property doesn't. Uh, what lands will be in the. Yeah, what they would call stay open waters and what happens would be that water course in the back. Um, and that would be the, which is way far. But still, and D P, it's a, it's a repairing course, and it's more family for wildlife and so on. That they preserve and they had very stringent requirements, especially if it's a category one stream, which persists. The requirements go to three hundred, so.
Exactly, so this, they gave a variant that you don't have to be strictly within the three hundred feet or?
So the, the requirement is, uh, that you, you can't go within a hundred and fifty foot of it. And any disturbance still within that three hundred, you need to get a permit and you need to tabulate every square footage of our investment.
So if all of this, um. Uh, exemption in the movement will.
Permanent, yeah, permanent, not exempt, because the process.
Was given by D P. Besides, what other variances you would need from the board?
Because.
But, yeah, you know, so we testified to the, the variances in front of the board and, uh, last finish, the critical area is steam slopes.
Oh, there.
We're gonna clarify, we're gonna clarify those.
Okay, the steam slope is not within this permit.
Not okay here, that's, uh, under jurisdiction of this.
Thank you.
His name and address.
Uh, James Crossman, three Stony Brook Lane. So, uh.
James, sorry.
Good, how you doing?
Good, good, well.
Seven bedrooms suggests a lot more traffic. It's a single-lane dirt road, um, some of us have active areas on both sides of the road. Me walking to my shed, you have neighborhood kids in the garage. I don't know how we could. Address any of that, but that would certainly be a, a concern, um, I don't know how many drivers there will be, but as it is. Your room for one car. And when you have. FedEx, Amazon, UPS blasting up the road, it's already kind of a dicey situation. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about the safety aspect, I don't know if there's a way to mitigate. That concern.
Well, it's a, it's a single-family house, they would, uh, certainly. They understand the, the driveway and the access to the site and that's how they would, um, essentially access and. Egress the site is through that, so they are aware of that, um. It is for their family and they do need the seven bedrooms based off their family size.
Yeah.
So whether, I mean, whether they, you know, they have, you know, and, and it's.
Well, and in terms of the safety, it's, it's the infrastructure itself, there's a. There's a one-lane bridge that accesses that, I'm not sure if the lumber trucks and. Concrete trucks are gonna be going over that, how do we protect that from damage? But that's our only way in and out. And what happens if there's an emergency, you know, an ambulance has to go or a fire?
It would be how it is today, I mean, if there's ever an emergency or fire, even just like anything else, it's just an addition.
But I'm talking about preserving the, the integrity of the bridge and, and the road. Um, with, with the construction activities.
So with the bridge and the road, I mean, whatever is necessary, I didn't. I, I.
Hasn't been any planning or talks or thought?
Yeah, so anticipate that any culvert that'll be put in there or any, uh, bridge would have to have H twenty loading and the requirements for truck. Truck traffic, that's usually a, a requirement whenever you're putting, uh, a culvert or, or, or a, or a bridge. That's to take in vehicular traffic, which allows for that traffic to go over unless we are aware of anything contrary, then we would, um. We, we would do whatever is necessary to, um. To support, but it's our understanding that what the rating of. Traffic and vehicular traffic and H twenty loading allows for certain vehicles. And construction vehicles, whether it be a tractor, trailer, or a, a larger vehicle does allow for that. I, if it, you know, we, I, if, if we have any information on.
One with this question.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna. Um, to the access, can you kind of go over what the access is? To, to this property?
Yeah.
That being said, this did have a variance already granted.
Hmm.
In two thousand and two. Okay, um, there was testimony at the time from the fire department. Um. There was testimony from, um, the. The, the rescue squad, I believe is what's in the record.
Okay, and twenty-three years difference doesn't.
Well.
Impact that.
I think your concern is, are, are these? Construction vehicles gonna come in and damage the road or damage the bridge? And I think what he's saying is, as far as he knows. Construction vehicles are, this bridge rated for construction vehicles, and I think what he's offering is, if for some reason there are construction vehicles. Uh, that would be greater than it's allowed on that, the, the applicant will make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, and furthermore, I mean, it's a single family, one wood frame structure. Uh, concrete wood frame structure, so it's not like steel and, you know, major.
Uh, a cement truck is not a light thing, though, so I'm, yeah, just asking.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's what, when, when in highway design and traffic design, usually. Whenever you're putting a culvert, it has to meet certain requirements before it's put in.
All right, we have, um. We're, we're gonna look at this. But we have to. Get out of the public comment for our, our.
Okay, can I ask you a couple?
So keep on going as far as your questions.
I think you said the, um. Septic system. There is an expected flow of eleven hundred gallons per day.
Um. Eleven hundred, um.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, so we're all on, on wells there, I'm not sure. Is eleven hundred gallons per day expected to impact that aquifer and? Drop our wells and maybe potentially cause us to need to dig deeper wells. Seven bedrooms, seven bathrooms, we're on old wells.
Hmm. So, uh, you're talking about what the septic.
Drinking. Well, well, I, I'm just connecting the septic capacity to what the flow going into it would be, which would be sanitary water, right?
Okay.
So if, if it's designed for eleven hundred and you have seven bedrooms, seven bathrooms, potentially you could go to eleven hundred gallons per day. Is that going to drop the wells?
You're asking if seven people. Would, seven or eight people would drop the well in the, in the aquifer, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay. Um.
That, that would require much more. Volume and intensity to drop the, the level, yeah.
Okay. Stormwater has been a significant issue, I think it was last year. We had. A minimum of three, maybe four inches of ice going. On much of the road from runoff. Myself and another neighbor could not get needed heating fuel. For two weeks. He has propane, truck went, couldn't come, wouldn't come, I have fuel oil. Um. We got by with wood stoves. But I'm just thinking additional, I don't think we can stress enough the stormwater. Concerns and when it rains. Some of us get dirty water in our yards and our garages sometimes as it is.
I think that's an existing thing, what I would encourage is that the neighbors do get together and see how they can improve maybe. That road and the drainage infrastructure collectively, I think that would be helpful, um, this, this. This application, they're looking to move into a buildable lot, um, and to build their. Family home, uh, I do think that there are, there's merit, certainly, to what you're saying, and it might be fruitful for the, the neighbors that. Utilize that road to get together and see maybe what are the best ways to improve it, to make it better for, for everybody.
What I'm gonna, possibly.
I would, I would agree with that.
Because I, I get the concern. Part of this application is that they're gonna be adding a stormwater management system themselves from that property, so. It's not the solution for the neighborhood, but the intention, the hope is that there's not gonna be any more negative, in fact, if anything, it should really alleviate some stress over from that.
It's gonna capture some of the overland.
It's gonna capture. What's, what applies to that property, so again, it's not gonna be the savior for everybody, but it shouldn't. As designed, be this big negative impact.
Yes, and, and your question is what will this storm?
Sonya Perplein.
This one here, right?
Well, where's Love Lo Station at?
Love Lo Station is over here in the city. And then here, and then it's a, the driveway where it comes here, so that's, that's the road.
Okay, yeah, so water. Came all the way down.
Well, I would have nothing for this development, he's downstream. But when you're talking about, you know, if you look at the property. You're at, you know, two eighty-three, well, downstream, so we're actually, the water coming onto this stuff. Nothing from this site will be affected or issued.
You're saying this is, this is, don't you broke?
Yes, so it's a power, these starting here, it's well, not bad.
And, and I just have a final, um. Question, I think it's more of a town-wide issue. But I've lived a dozen places, I've never had so many power outages, let me, let me. There's. This, we try to separate things.
No, it, it applies to this, it, it applies to this, so there's a power transformer on the pole on our road. Will increased capacity have to be adjusted by J C P N L for the transformer?
That's something that the.
I, I don't wanna, another electrical issue.
That's something that the power company will evaluate, um.
One of the conditions will be that they get will serve letters from the power company that services property. So J C P N L will look at that and make the presumably say that they will serve the property and then will address it.
Maybe that'll be a way to upgrade it, but then, and up to, I saw you on to the, the, um, the power company.
Okay, thank you.
There is gonna be, so everyone knows, at the, at the conclusion of all the witnesses, there will be a general question in the answer session on this application, so.
Okay.
I'm Bob, I live right above here, I have the shared driveway.
All right, good evening.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't think I have a question about the right way going past up on my property. So when you're all set and done, you have to narrow the right way down at all.
Not touching anything, they just.
When you can put your buffer in it, you don't wanna see. You wanna seal your house a little bit, it's not gonna go out to the right.
No, no, everything will be fully contained on the property.
Nothing wrong with my house, the road has a trench, you know, I.
Nope. More surement.
Any other questions, because?
Do you know how deep the well is gonna be?
Um, that's not my specialty, that would be the well drilling company, they would, they would drill as necessary to get to the aquifer.
So they can, have their, you know, and everything there for, I'm, I'm just curious how deep wells are over there.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and they would they would drill until they find the aquifer. There are specialized companies that do that.
Are any other questions for this witness? Again, and and if we can discuss the uh. The access road. There's a a concern that that I have is the. Um is the steepness and it's kind of sorry because it's steep, it's just because it's a it's a stone brow um. Milling milling driveway with some severe uh water run down rust and runoff um. And two thousand two, the discussion with the fire department was was accessibility, make sure that. You know, rescue squad, police and fire has access to that property um. So that is a concern that needs to also be discussed where that where that maintenance happens. Whether it's uh an agreement between neighbors or something like that, but it's it's a significant. You know, it's a, even right now, it's it's pretty rough, so.
So, in that vein, the the two thousand two approval had conditions of. And those conditions really center on the access drive and certain things that were supposed to happen. Uh so we can go through them there was. Or I think so, the condition, uh the first condition was applicant and other users. Of the accessway to lot twenty entry, joint maintenance agreement for the private road access in full in a form approved by the board attorney and township engineer. Such agreement shall include provisions to maintain the access and a condition suitable for use. By emergency vehicles, including clearing vegetation in an area eight foot wide by eight foot. Eighteen feet wide by eighteen feet five, suitable grading signage and travel waste surface. I don't know if that agreed, that maintenance agreement was ever struck or exists. B, is either as part of the joint maintenance agreement or by separate agreement. Whose form is approved by the board attorney and township engineer, provisions are made to maintain the square. Whose condition was testified to by Mr. Lucas. Item C, the owners of lot, owner of lot twenty imposed upon the lot a conservation easement enforced by the township. Including provisions mentioned in finding the fact number six. In a form approved by the board attorney and township engineer on all areas of the lot outside of limit of disturbance shown on exhibit A seven. Such easement shall therefore be thereafter be recorded, so that would be a conservation easement beyond. The legal limit of disturbance required for constructing the whole driveway. Applicants shall reinforce the bridge on the private access road during construction in a manner approved by the township engineer. Item B, applicant's plan shall be revised to show a septic system location and such plan shall be subject to approval by the township engineer. Um as we saw this evening, the separate disposal field is shown on the plans and subject to Hurry County Health Department approval. Applicants shall submit to the board a statement and bring voluntarily to apply by the Hurry County Soil Conservation District stand and turn construction. Approval by the county, the soil conservation district will be required as any condition of approval. Um and this is required visual in five thousand square feet. Item G, applicant shall widen the sharp corner on Stony Brook Lane in a manner approved by the township engineer. And item H, applicant shall also suitably maintain driveway on this lot twenty. Which maintenance shall include suitable grading and clearing vegetation in an area at least eighteen feet wide by eighteen feet five. So as to afford access to emergency vehicles and construct a turnaround as shown on the final plot. Those were the conditions from two thousand two.
And so those those conditions, even though this isn't your property, those conditions.
Move forward.
Yeah, so they're they're fine with them, the only thing.
I understand all of those.
Yeah, remember, yeah, the only thing I would request is that I think some of the earlier ones also involves from the neighboring property, so I would just maybe clarify that. We'll use our best efforts and uh come to the agreements with this, but I just would be hesitant to hold it up, hold up an application based on, you know, something that's out of our.
Understood.
Yeah, I can hold it now, but.
Yeah, it would be in everybody's best interest too, you know, any, for example, any new subdivision that's created nowadays that has a common driveway. That's a requirement for that, and it just establishes, you know, some parameters that everybody works on.
But my concern would be the reinforcement of the bridge, that's kind of big.
Steel plates. One of steel plates, put it down fifteen foot long, whoever's doing it, should the excavator is gonna have access to those?
Again, going back to, you know, point that was made earlier, the two thousand two observations are twenty three years old.
I mean, the 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 other issue is that, you know, this house is considerably bigger than what was being built there before. And, you know, the height of this, I think, would require more of a fire truck than than what. What we saw the foundation for. Um I don't know whether or not a big fire truck would be able to go across that bridge. I mean, the width of it, my truck just barely fit into it. You know, I mean, is that, I I guess the fire company testified to this.
They did. I read through the entire. They had they had the fire chief out there. Fire trucks twenty three years ago, I don't know if they've been bigger per se.
But I mean, the 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 height of the building now and the size of it, I mean, so, you know, we're, you said the three thousand. Three thousand ninety square feet is is just the is just the. So it's it's over ten thousand square feet total building, right?
Uh well, that's with the garage, so there's no basement for a second story on the garage.
So it's a three car garage.
Four hundred meters square feet in my garage. This still needs to height what our ordinance is, so it's no higher than any other house in town.
The only thing is that, you know, looking at this house, you know, normally, you know, we're we're looking at going to the peak. This has got a flat roof. So, you know, we no longer have, you know, an attic that's burned, we have bedrooms that are burned, and I have like. You know, that has a flat roof, you've got full bedrooms all the way up at the very top.
And that's that's how the height is defined for for buildings. Or.
It's to the peak.
It's it's, well, it's to the peak, but it does have a provision in there for flatter. So basically, it says a vertical distance from the average finished grade to the top of the highest roof beams on a flat or shed roof. The deck level of a manse group and the average distance between the eaves and the ridge level for a gable, pit or gameroom. Groups, so the ordinance takes into account the flatter.
Alright, you had um.
Just additional additional five elevations around the house by positive transition, and I can see there is. The the grading on the lot does grade toward. Towards the towards the north, which is towards the intersection of of Stony Brook and Level. So I can see how maybe that lower section does get water across and if there's any. Grading that can be done on site, kind of intercept. Well, along that and along that road, hopefully for on onsite. And get it at least so that it's not shedding over onto the road, that would be. That I think that would help alleviate some of the issues that the resident had raised.
Yeah, yeah, um so two things we can offer is what we can, so going from the house, we have the drywall. Uh what we can do is uh on the backside of that retaining wall, we can put some under drains. So as the water is um coming off, at least for the impervious areas of the worst. Coming off, it will find its way to the backside of the retaining wall, under drain, and then we can under drain that. To the um to the drywall as well.
Yeah, primarily just to direct that is the new impervious coverage, so that it's not heading towards. Stone Brook Lane.
We will do, understood. And then we'll work with your office regarding any reinforcement, I think the steel plates would be great, but if there's anything else that you suggest, we'd certainly work.
We could certainly have our structural guys go out and take a little prior construction. Want to include that as a condition that we will assess. Condition of the.
Oh, I get the concern, your concern is, you know, is a, you know. Is it, there's a bunch of hazards on. So, you know, if it if it does fail, it's not just the building, their building that's being affected, it is, you know. And it it isn't real life, so definitely got that.
Or I should I should be worried that if the applicant's engineers provide something for us to review. We'll have our structural guys take.
Yeah, and so um is it, I know that you had mentioned that the cross the access easement is showing a deed, is it possible to have it added to the plan? It's just sort of getting understanding extent of where that exists along this side of the property.
Um yeah, we we can uh we can add it, we can get it to your office, I mean, we'll make sure that that's very clearly recorded.
Okay.
Was it established, like, was there needs and now to establish?
I don't have the deed with me, and I know it did, it did, uh talk about the access easements, yeah.
Just wanna make sure that that's button up, I mean, this is where it needs to exist. It would be expanded. I know there's been a lot of testimony about the condition of this site, the steep slopes, the flood hazard area, was there no way to provide a. Home that fronts on Love Lo Station where this property does have roadway frontage, which is simply not not permissible or not a. Option for your design.
Um we talked about to front door outside where the where the property actually above Love Lo Station road, way up north.
Where the flood hazard and slopes are worse. Was it out of the, completely out of question?
Yeah, so that's completely, it's been a hundred and fifty prepared effort.
I just wanted to make sure that that was.
You just have to testify to why it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Um yeah, so I just to provide an overview for the board and the public sake of the variance relief being requested. Um it was already discussed, but minimum lot area required at five acres where four point nine three is proposed. Minimum lot frontage is required at two hundred fifty feet where one sixty seven point six two feet are closed. Minimum lot width, same thing, two hundred fifty feet is required or one hundred seventy six point six two feet are proposed. Um development within critical areas, the ordinance restricts uh principal or accessory buildings within critical areas mapped on. And that's on township mapping and um the applicant is requesting a variance from that. And uh for municipal land, you saw building lots are are supposed to be a letting of streets, so we we just. The relief should be requested for that as well, since this is a private road. Additionally, the waivers, design waivers being uh disturbance of steep slopes and development on slopes having. Twenty percent or greater or ten percent or greater within the. Some, we did the rough calculations at eighteen percent, so that uh definitely applies here. Um regarding the variance relief, if you could provide some testimony as to a C one or C two variance. Um kind of how the applicant is approaching this, I think that we heard from some of the residents in the high. Um there are some concerns that may be negative and detrimental to public good, so I just wanna see. How you would view as the applicant's team kind of wants to offset that and how you feel that those are mitigated and that the benefits of this application are outweighed by. Any of these potential negatives.
Yeah, so I'll start off now and feel free to jump in where I'm missing, um again, this is a application for permitted single family home. Uh the applicants themselves are gonna be living there with their with their family, uh they do have a relatively large family, uh hence the size of the application. Um and to all the concerns with uh access and and uh overflow rain and all that. Uh like I said, these guys are gonna be living there themselves, so it it betrays them just as much as anybody else that they want to address these problems. Uh you know, if if they have all their kids in their home, they're gonna want the fire department to be able to get there just as much as as any of their neighbors, so. Um you know, what whatever it takes for for access, supporting the the bridge um. Cleaning up the the road itself, you know, that they're more than happy to do that and uh really, like I said, they wanna do it because they're gonna be working that.
As I said, furthermore, we minimize our development and cluster to develop into a small footprint, and that makes allowable. As well as staying under the impervious, well under the impervious ability coverage. Uh that's also allowable, that worries um and will reduce the mitigation for the stormwater management, we're providing. Uh mitigation with regards to stormwater management to capture the runoff from roof layers.
And then I guess the only last thing I would add is, uh we've talked about it, but just to reiterate that there hasn't been approval on this property for a single family home. Obviously, the property's changed slightly, um but that's what this this lot was intended to be used for. Uh it has been vacant for quite some time, but really the applicants are here to uh kind of cross the line with it and and. Bring this lot to what it was intended to be.
Do you believe that by the exceptional narrowness, challenge, or shape of this property, there's no other place to uh put this?
That's correct, yes.
And um along with your environmental constraints. And do you have any reason to believe that um. Do you believe that deviation from the zoning ordinance, the benefits would outweigh any detriments?
Alright, yes.
Okay.
I will, the the inability uh a lot like this in order to build what it would be entire. Uh property that is within buildable footprint is all steep slopes, um that's really the only portion. That this site can go and also with the environmental constraints, you know, tucking it far enough away so it's not within. The hundred and fifty foot buffer that will carry it.
If I have a lot of questions I want to ask, but I wanted to make sure, do you have any more witnesses?
No, I think that's which our testimony.
Okay, so. Sure, sure. Alright, public comment for any any questions or if you have more questions about the allegation.
I just wanna make sure I'm. Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the eighteen foot width that was that was mentioned, what would that apply to?
The access to keep it keep it clear, that was something. That the township engineer back then, Bob Bogarty's work for help, he always, emergency services. He always wanted to maintain an eighteen foot wide and eighteen foot high. Clear vegetation, so that um emergency service vehicles.
Cool, clear vegetation, but you're not proposing to make the lane eighteen foot wide and take my outbuilding and half my driveway, right?
Believe that's, I don't believe that was the intent, I believe it was. Suitable grading and clearing of vegetation in an area at least eighteen feet wide by eighteen feet high.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a private road. Who plows the road, uh we do shovels and pickaxes?
You have to come up here, if you're gonna comment, you have to come up here and identify yourself, this has to be made for the record, can't just have a.
Say, my name is Luis Andres, I'm five thirty love low, uh I'm at the, if anybody's gonna put the gate there and collect tolls, that'll be me. We take care of the driveway ourselves. We have our our neighbor that's not present here, Luke, he's also ones with the plow, he's the furthest one up the hill, and he'll come down. My kids will be out there with snow shovels, our neighbor will be out there with whatever equipment we have to keep it. And he'll come down, my kids will be out there with snow shovels, our neighbor will be out there with whatever equipment we have to keep it. Driveable, you know, that's the everything we do.
The only matter, I have to warn you, boss, my biggest concern is that bridge. I've done work on the other side of that bridge, we plated it, I've been underneath that bridge. I think we allow everything, they, they should be some kind of a bond put up from the start of the job to the end, just to verify the bridge held up. But who's responsible for fixing the bridge? That's my thought on that. I've been underneath that bridge, it's not the greatest bridge, it's pretty golden.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I have the, I have the very capital as far as it would be a, some kind of a bond on private property. And typically, we would, we would. If it was a, if it's a township, it has a township code, we, we could require a bond, I'm not sure we can do that on private property.
All right.
Thank you for having the bridge certified somehow. It's a guy's private property.
Yeah.
You mean, how could they build it if you can't put the cement?
Well, what I would offer is, like we said, right, that we'll go out, we'll do inspection, we'll, we'll have the town here, review everything and, and we won't be moving forward with anything until we get your approval.
That's going to be a condition of approval, yeah. And then you're just going to sign off, the vehicles will be able to come over.
I think that's probably the best we can.
Yeah.
If I may add an additional comment regarding the bridge, it is a concern. Um, a couple of seasons ago, there was torrential downpour. It really flooded my, my garage, that's true. This water came down, also is true, but what really caught our attention were the huge boulders that you guys have seen down there in the side brook. Were moved. Before you took over ownership of that, your new property, the neighbor there lost a lot of boulders that he had. They were just swept away, a lot of compression down from upstream into that bridge. Is there concern? Yes, there is. I would ask that somebody with expertise take a good, healthy look at it. Myself, I'm on the Ludlow Station, I'm going to get in and out, but my neighbor's not, so, so I, I do ask for that. Thank you.
Still asking applicant?
It's general questions.
Oh, general questions, so.
That haven't already been asked. That haven't already been asked.
This is not been asked. So during construction, uh, what's going to be um put up to have no, make sure there's no debris going into the. Brook, will there be like a silk fence and?
Yeah, yeah, that would be, alright, so requirement soil erosion, typically temporary construction fence, silk fence. Uh, also stockpile.
And it's actually an outside agency approval.
Yeah.
That he's going to have, that that would require. So that's an outside, it needs the approval, which is soil conservation, so that's going to hold this.
They know the environmental commission, that was some of their big things, because they've seen trout in that. Brook and they're very concerned with uh the degradation of that brook.
Hence the three hundred foot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking specifically in terms of during construction. Yeah.
This, if, if comments, questions, and anything else, anyway.
Regarding that bridge again, my grandfather built that bridge in fifty five. So you're gonna, it's gonna have to be addressed, but at least you're gonna have to put shielding over to go over, you know, bridge trucks, everything. Septic tanks, you're not going to be over, okay, but.
Nineteen fifty five.
Nineteen fifty five.
So, no more witnesses, right?
That concludes everything, we got a list. Or if you have any more questions, so.
I have a few, since I'm the man with the resident. Um, we mark exhibit A one, your application, you're going to be that, right, with evidence. And then there's K two, the C B, um, candle, that, if I said it right, that's correct, and that's moving to that. Number three was the plot plan, um, and A four was the architectural plan, right? Is there anything else that we want to leave in that?
I believe that's it, unless.
Or the only other thing was the permit, uh, I think you have.
That's. At least if you're. So we're just going to leave it at that. Okay, and then want to talk about the uh variances. So lot area, everybody agrees, that's variance number one. Number two was lot width, and number three is lot frontage, I think everybody was in agreement with that. Um, in reviewing Mr. Deckard's letter, I thought and saw lot depth. Um, was an issue. Uh, one hundred and twenty one point seven nine feet for floor, five hundred and three hundred, that, with that town. That rarely, rarely be that.
This is lot depth, I don't look comes.
Lot depth, and you, on, um, your.
Yeah, page three. Truck, your notice requires three hundred feet, and what exists is, and it depends on where you're taking this.
Okay.
You know, if it's off of Ludlow Station Road, it's one distance, if you're taking it off of, starting from a plane, it's. A different thing.
So you want that variance?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. And then, um, I, the critical area, that was already addressed in the resolution two thousand two, number one. Um, but you're asked, so, uh, there's really nothing for the board to do to the extent that it's already been granted. But you're basically asking, totally affirm that, same with the um. Permit the issuance of a construction permit for a lot, which didn't have, but the public street that was previously granted. So you're asking for kind of reaffirmation of that, and, and then. Um, Mike, you called them design waivers, I think Tom called them uh variances. Um, these severely constrained slopes. Um, under the two different sections, are we calling them waivers or calling them variances? I, they're under one of section one oh two, so if you want your variance, just to be safe. Okay, yeah, that's where they go. There's a lot of very very rare variants, I don't know where you're selling. Yes. And they were granted. I don't like re-permit. Yeah, okay, that's. Variance, variance is already granted with a set of conditions out of previous documents, so I'd rather just work with what you all, what's already granted. That's, I just take that out. So this, so we're, we're back to four then, uh, lot area, lot width, lot fence, a lot depth.
And I would yield to you, I mean, if you want to reference the previous approval, they're all on the latest, that's fun with us, but Scott, I would, I would yield to you.
Okay, got you. Um. And then. Yeah. That's it. Uh, that's it. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I wanted to go over the conditions of approval, just to make sure, do you have a disturbed decker's letter?
Uh, no, we'll lay this out.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Deckard and all you guys are on the same page. And so if you look at Mr. Deckard's letter, starting on page five, under technical comments. Okay, so, um, Mr. Candle, Mr. Boros, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so number three, um, additional spot grades. That's a, would be a conditional approval, do you concur?
Yes.
Number four, conditional of approval?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then now, uh, down to general comments, number two. Set of architectural plans, condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next page, number four. Well, from four through eight, take a look at four through eight, I would consider all of these conditions of approval, please tell me if you concur.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Okay, and then of course, we're, Mr. Deck already went through it, all the conditions of approval in the prior resolution. Right, just want to make sure we're all on the same page, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I think suggest, I mean, on the action, I think, or desk. Uh, there's another condition, given insensitivity to the grading and building height and so forth. The ordinance doesn't really have a mechanism for grading review of an individual lot. I would suggest that condition also be included that the final grading plan. Be issued to our office for review prior to issuance to golden permits, so we can confirm that everything is. And of course, with the approval, past demarcism. And any of the drainage concerns that have been raised are addressed.
Yeah, yeah, we're broken with that. Like, are these conditions to remove the existing? Um. Foundation.
Yeah, I wrote that, I wrote that, and I just wanted to make sure they were on board with what Tom had, but I've been writing down these other conditions that.
Um, and also determination of, uh, of the bank, whatever that tank is, right?
Well, that was, that's more a realistic transfer component. Yeah, a removal of the foundation, obviously, if they remove the foundation and there's a tank.
The tank is not, it's, it's, it's up, uphill from, from the foundation. It's.
Okay, but you want the foundation removed, that.
Yeah, yeah, the foundation, it said, they, they said they were going to remove the foundation.
Right.
But then the tank was kind of left. As, it's kind of, that they're going to check into it what were there. Um, but I think that, that whatever is exposed above the ground should be removed.
Okay.
So maybe I can offer then, we will just be compliant with whatever town or county or agency approvals and requirements for removals. Uh, if it is contaminated or, or what have you.
Well, but.
Even then, I just, the reason I don't want to be so preemptively removing everything is because again, we don't believe it impacts the application. So if it does, uh, what we're trying to build when we last will take care of it, but if they come and take a look and say, no, this, this is a, blows everything, fine. Then that might be a problem for, for another day, and up to our, to my client.
You don't have any history of what that is, we don't know.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, we don't know.
It is cover. Is currently covered, correct?
No. There's a cover on top, it's completely rusted out of the base.
Okay.
We, we'll explore and remove, remove it if needed, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a borderline as to whether it's something, uh, that I think you can order. But I think the app, what I'm hearing from applicant is that they would work with the township engineer to, upon exploration. To figure out what's there, what might need to be done.
Yeah, I think that's. And that could be a condition.
I think that's about all we can legally say.
I would, I would suggest that they add those locations to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can, we can make that addition.
Uh, everybody, well, to the rule or abandoned in accordance with.
I would got it on the record where they are, and if they've been read.
Certainly.
Good.
Just want to clarify the conditions of two thousand two, because the township, uh, has a lot of being built on private road. Kind of where a lot of time we're developing some lanes throughout a township, and the township ends up managing those in various ways. Whether they're putting in some stormwater out, the other roadways, or. Extra stall or things, you know, the trajectory of those progressive is often, so if there, if there, it appears that there is currently no maintenance agreement with that road at all. If the maintenance agreement is not completed, would that conclude construction of this residence?
And that's what I was kind of referencing at the beginning, that we on our side will use our best efforts um to come to that agreement. But obviously, there's people using it now, and I just would be.
Township would prefer to see an agreement as well, so it may just be an opportunity to have people come together and, and form whatever. Yeah, it's helpful to the asserting. Yeah, I agree, this is stony for plain. A lot of times, he's, he's common driveways or part of the flagstaff of a, of a flag lot, and then another lots tied to. Uh, I don't have enough information, but it's starting for plain to actually go across one lot, and go across another lot. And go across the third lot, so that each, each property actually owns a portion of the lane.
It goes all the way out of my shirt.
It goes all the way out of our.
For any, any ownership.
But the actual, I, I guess the question is the actual ownership of the land that, that you're driving, where your wheels are actually hitting.
Yeah, there's parts of, I lose parts of. Sorry. That's a good segment.
Yeah. So there, there should be, and I agree with the mayor, um. It's a, we've, we've had, we as a town have had instances where there's, um. Again, the gentleman's all the way at the end of this private lane, and there's a problem. They come to the town for help, and this is, this is private property. So, um, it's something that all of the residents on that really need to get, you know, need to discuss. I guess my concern is, like every other agreement, if you have, you know, six, six neighbors. And, you know, one gentleman is just off of Ludlow Station, and, you know, the others, as far as they can get. The cost breakdown or whatever comes into play, and, and, and there could be some people walking away from that discussion. We can't have that happen.
Well, I think the applicant's an agreement with that, I think what at least it concerns is, you, you can lead a horse to order, but you can't make him drink. The other side says, I don't want to enter into an agreement with you. Um, yeah, neither I or we, excuse me, neither the board nor he can force somebody to enter into an agreement. So all you can do is ask them to use good faith.
So this is also, but the agreement is part of the actual variance. So there has to be, they said, it's a concern, because in the two thousand two variance, it states there, there has to be an agreement. And there wasn't an agreement done as was stated by.
So that begs the question. Actually ever put into, into a backside.
So.
That's a good point, so if there was no agreement.
Yeah, and one of the conditions of the, of the, of giving those variances was never met. Where those variances, or those variances binding.
Well, the question is, what did anybody follow up for the last twenty three years, or this just go? So, I don't know if you can penalize the applicant, because maybe nobody did anything.
Yeah, and for personal reasons of my understanding, the previous owner, he just, he didn't get far enough in the process, which is why it went away.
The concern is getting an agreement.
Yeah.
So I, I, in good faith, they need to work that out, um, but we have to have something, so it's, it's, it's going to come to the engineer. Um, and, and I would like to say it, you know, prior to the, the, you know, the building.
Yeah.
You know, permits issued, at least to have something that's on paper.
I guess I just.
Basically protects everybody.
Out of, uh, trying to represent my client properly again, I just, not to be broken record, I just am nervous. Without knowing, I'm sure the neighbors are lovely, I don't know them, I don't know the history of that street or any agreements, so we can only do really so much in our own. But with good faith, we will come up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, I, I take the gentleman's testimony uh to heart that, you know. Somebody not clearing ice from a road to the point where you can't get fuel, you know, what happens when that? When that chimney fire starts to, you know, when you're burning all the, all the wood, that's the, you know, if the fuel trucks can't get there, neither can the fire trucks. You know, I think that that's a real, real point of safety that has to be addressed. And I think it makes sense that all of them address it. Um, but, you know, I, I understand your position too, and that, you know, we can't expect him. I mean, if one of those neighbors is against this, they could easily just say, no, I don't want to agree to this, because then you can't build.
Exactly.
You know, that, that becomes an issue. And frankly, even if you deny the application, it's the same issue, right? The road still hasn't even been agreed with, it's, you're, you're kind of still on the same.
And the fire chief is, uh, that's going to be an outside agency approval, so, you know, the fire chief can lean again. Um, we, we got it in two thousand two. Was that? Part of the two thousand two. Yeah. It was approved. We have to do it again, it was already. Yeah, what I'm saying, uh, one of the conditions would be outside agency approval, so I think it's reasonable to say that. Updated, updated outside agency approval.
And we, we would be fine.
All right, I need a motion to approve the application. Going to a great chance for that.
Make question to approve the application with the variances noted. For block thirty nine, I'm not so far. One thirty nine, one four nine, what, left minute. Need a second?
Question, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, so the variances that we're looking at tonight, lot width, lot depth. A whole bunch of variances were granted twenty three years ago. The lot width and lot depth haven't changed in twenty three years, so is it our ordinance that changed? Like, why weren't these variances granted twenty three years ago, I guess, is my question.
Who knows, right?
Who knows, right? Who knows what their thing, maybe there's an incomplete application, maybe there's an oversight, maybe there's.
At, at this point, there's a lot of variances here.
Did you vote to go into? You have a second, everybody read the.
At this point, there's a lot of waivers, a lot of stuff. What will be, you're asking us to approve now, the whole application as it is. Without any assurance and all these waivers, all, all this other stuff will be carried through. It wasn't carried through the first time. I'm concerned that we're gonna go down the same road.
All right, let me just help focus your deliberation. You can't, you, this is a different applicant. Different applicant, a different application twenty three years later. The board did make some rulings that are binding on this board. You also, that's the rule number two, there's a distinction between waivers and variances. They're asking for variances here, there's no real design waivers that they're looking at here, they're asking for variances. And when you say not follow through, they're gonna be. If, if you vote in favor of this application, the application will be granted with these four variances we discussed with a lot of conditions of approval. Which are mostly summarized in Tom's letter and additional ones that we talked about today. And then it is up to the township to make sure that there's compliance.
Uh, I understand what you're saying. I would like to hear all these conditions and all, all. Details before I go.
So, well, we, we can go through them again. These were the ones that, you have the Tom's letter of October fifteen, twenty twenty five in front of you? That's what we went through a few moments ago. Okay, so if you go to page five. Letter technical comments. Numbers three and four, conditions of approval. Would they agree to? Only three and four. Okay, so if you want, and I'll tell you all, if you wanna read all these, you can read all these. But they agreed with, I don't see with a pen or something, I don't know if you're gonna remember this. Three and four, they agreed to under technical comments, under general comments, number two is a condition of approval. As uh, are four through eight. And then they agreed to all eight. Conditions of approval from two thousand and two. And then there's been some additional ones we talked about tonight, that we're taking some notes on. You're gonna have an opportunity to read the proposed resolution. And at the next meeting, you'll have the opportunity to deliberate further as to whether the, whether those resolutions consist of what. What you voted on today.
You just made something clear. We're not approving this, we're just. It, this is not final approval.
It is final approval, every, but every approval or denial has to be in a memorializing resolution. But if you, if you're voting on something today that you think is not proper, that will be moralized in the next meeting, you can. Vote against it or say that it's incorrect, but we're gonna have it for you to take a look at. But yet you're voting on what you heard today. I can't give you a piece of paper to tell you exactly. But that's why we say we incorporate the engineer's letter, you've heard the testimony, we've been taking notes, you heard the. Applicant agree to every condition that was asked. It's just kind of just paying attention, listening and. And relying upon the professionals to get.
You have the variances. Which I would, would. And then the conditions. Are separate from that.
If I can, if I can maybe help address the basic question, as far as, you know. It wasn't done since two thousand two. The trigger to that would have been when they, if previous property owner committed building permits and so forth. That would have triggered the conditions, but because he didn't commit any building permits, there was no.
Having built this foundation.
No reason for them to comply with the condition.
How do you build this foundation without building permit?
That, I, that I don't know.
Do you know if the foundation was there before then?
Obviously, it was.
Yeah, I don't know if it was.
Before, and this is why I ask some of these questions.
But, but that's, that's the trigger.
Right.
For them to comply with the conditions if, if the current applicant is under contract purchase, walks away from the property. These conditions won't get satisfied until the next person that is considering the structure of the, of the property.
You always have the right to abstain if you don't feel comfortable or you don't have adequate information, you can always abstain from a vote. You also, as a member of the board, can have the right to make a motion to uh, ask the application be uh. Or the deliberations be moved to the next meeting. You, you have things you can do. Uh, if you're not comfortable, you don't have to just go along with everybody. Your pressure or whatever.
Along that line, Scott, can you just reread what condition, what we've settled on the conditions for the, or whatever that tank is that's.
So it's removal of the concrete and then for the tank, it is that they're going to. Um, look at any tanks on the property, I mean, uh, undergo, do an investigation of what the tank is. And then discuss that in good faith with the board engineer. It may just be an empty barrel toys, right? And then we don't have to worry about it. But if it's something else, they have to, that would be a condition they have to discuss with the engineer.
Let's put that little stuff on two thousand. All about the. All these conditions would also be, would carry forward.
Absolutely.
With the exception that the agreement for the, for the road maintenance. Is not enforceable.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the question. It's enter joint maintenance agreement. I don't know what authority the board had to. Make some due to the non-party to the application enter into an agreement, just like we can't so right now.
So why do we have that on the thing?
Because we're gonna try to prod. We may not be able to force from our. Yeah, I'm gonna leave it in.
So, but doesn't that, doesn't that? Give an avenue where somebody could challenge this and say that because that wasn't met, this is not a, none of these. None of these variances approved or approved.
No, the time to, the time to challenge this will be the appeal period after the. Yeah, when after the memorializing resolution, it's out there to the public. People have that forty five day kind of period to challenge it. If somebody comes down a year from now, they're not gonna be able to challenge the resolution. They may be able to come in and talk to the uh, zoning officer, the construction officials say that they're not meeting the requirements. It could then be brought back here for interpretation and discussion, um, but. There's no way this board can force a third party to enter into a private agreement, that's all, yeah.
I, I agree a hundred percent. That, that's why I don't like seeing it there.
But I, but there, but directing them to enter in some, in good faith, I think is what you want.
I think we, I think town should have it in there, just as in a good faith, so that if something does happen. The other residents who are not even part of tonight. They want to come back to us as a town and say, you, you did, you did nothing to even replicate this. Well, we did. We suggested that they do this, we can't force it, but. I think it covers. Maybe, but that's why I would tell you to make very cautious in how you vote. Because that stays, that's probably the deed, regardless, direct, incorrect, that's not part of the deed, you can't change it.
You know, we, we, we can't force it, but they must have agreed to track it. No, I'm not, um, it is a condition, right? It was a condition, whether they agree to, we can impose conditions they don't agree upon, and then they can. Abandon the application if they don't agree.
So, no, but they had an approval, so they must have.
No, I'm saying they didn't. You get an approval, it doesn't mean the applicant agrees to one hundred percent. We could give them a, a, a resolution and say, these are the hundred things you have to do, and they might agree with ninety eight of them, but they're stuck with a hundred of them. So, but I don't think. Don't worry about what happened in two thousand two as relates to this a- agreement. It's, it's unenforceable, but it. The chairman's point is well taken. You don't need somebody else from the community coming and say, well, why didn't you address this? We're addressing it to the fullest extent of our ability.
If the original uh, where, where it is, we're just the two.
Yes.
Lot size and the.
They don't know.
We're all keeping, so that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, critical area is number one and not admitting a full, number two. He asked. Yeah, that, that's what was with.
So would it make sense, and I don't wanna muddy the water anymore, but Jose's concern about that tradition of the joint agreements. If we were to. That can we declare? Those two variances null because none of this happened? And then tonight, rank them again with a different set of conditions that don't conclude. The agreement. The joint agreement because.
You want the agreement.
I know, but to the enforceability of that is, is Jose's concern. So I agree, we want the agreement, but I don't know if we can, we can't.
It's still questionable enforceability.
Yeah, yeah, but the, 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 yeah, the question is, is because that was in there in. The conditions that, that approved those variances, those two variances. And that didn't get done. Should we redo them now? So that they are actually not affected. If something comes up later on, saying that, well, because that was never met.
I feel like they, well. The entire two thousand two variance component was passed, but they never exercised any of those variances. They walked away basically from the property.
Right.
So nothing was.
Okay, that, that's, that's all well and good, but.
I understand your question.
Because they did not follow through with all of the conditions. So they didn't follow through with all the conditions then.
I would say, wouldn't they gain variance? It would be the condition that they wouldn't be able to get a C O to the house.
No, it's, it's, that, that's what that says, that the, the conditions to getting those variances are these things.
So they'd have to meet those conditions now.
So, so typically, what would, what would have happened? Say, two thousand and five, okay, they weren't able to get those agreements. Because that was a condition of the. They would have had to have come back to the board to have that condition with.
Right. And, and here we are, back at the board.
Right.
And so are we lifting that condition? So that, that, that's what I'm saying.
Or we're waiting for five more years down the road for them to come back and say.
I don't think you wanna lift the condition. But you, you, you're asking a good question, or are, are the. You know, are these conditional variances and conditions weren't met, so do we need to re, re?
Exactly.
Brand the variances again.
The applicant's been trying to fulfill.
Yeah, I, I, I would say.
But the thing is, is that if he can't. Then again, it, it puts, it puts a question out there. It's not clear. You know, we're putting a condition on, a condition that, that's carrying forward. And if that condition was not met then. Was, are those variances legal? If they're not, then maybe we should redo them now so that they are legal. And, you know, we could leave the language from two thousand two in there that, you know, and, and certainly, it. It would be advantageous to every property owner there to, to make an agreement, to come to an agreement. But if they don't. It's, it's then holding up, like he said, they cannot force the neighbors to come into an agreement. And even if, and because they can. A neighbor could say, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, a neighbor could say, because that was not met. That agreement wasn't forced, wasn't, they didn't come to their agreement. Then all the variances are null and void because one of the conditions was that agreement.
The counterpoint would be it was an unenforceable condition.
Right. But the counterpoint can only be made in court.
My, I'm trying to correct me, I didn't know if I was blocked out or not. Maybe the, the clear solution to, to try to address all that is we can formally request that that. Condition be removed from this application. We then propose the new good faith agreement. And then we reiterate in the, uh, in the resolution, like we discussed all the other variances, so it was very clear that we have officially requested that. The condition around the agreement is removed, replaced with good faith efforts on the applicant's side. Uh, to create that exact same agreement, and then that should really kind of address all these kind of procedural issues.
I like that. And we would wanna re-grant all the relief again.
So if you had previously looked at the variances that were granted in the two thousand two application and said, we're not going to, the board should. They go favorably would not be approving those variances, essentially reaffirming them. And now we're kind of walking that back, saying that it might be cleaner just to have the board vote on those variances. All entirely and not carry stuff forward and have a new clean list of conditions, whether it may be the. Very similar to the last list with the good faith effort change, um, and the other conditions that was.
Yeah, it would definitely be cleaner. With no harm.
So we're responding to the evidence presented back then, given those two variant.
And what you consider, you know.
Yeah, this, this would still apply to all of that.
I know, I like that idea.
All right, Jeff, comments?
I agree, I like that idea.
All right, so motion was made.
I have, I have one more question.
Hopefully, this is a softball compared to that last issue. So one of the residents brought up the issue of parking, and I'm not sure, because of kind of the complexity of this with uh, private drive and the, and everything. Uh, it's a seven bedroom house and there's a three car garage and a short little driveway. Um, is there some sort of mechanism to address parking or preventing someone from parking on the shared drive or on Stony Brook Drive? Like maintaining, like, do the cars of the residents need to be parked on the property?
Unless it tells me differently, I don't think so.
Unless they include that in their maintenance agreement.
The whole idea of, you know, emergency vehicles need to pass by. I mean, if there's cars that are parked on shared driveways that could potentially block.
That should be part of the deed, if it's, if it's cross access easement for. Properties accessing their homes on other companies, they get across it, there's, that should be in there, and that's kind of why. Like, take a look at that in more detail, just to make sure, if not, maybe that can be an additional condition. That no parking is permitted on that cross access easement.
Maybe we just say that we'll comply with the deed, with the deed permits and any other agreements made with the neighbors.
You, you brought a question of enforcing how many cars they have.
Yeah, I was, I started like putting a number on it, but like I said, it was more a matter of making sure that the flow of traffic is maintained on the private drive. And again, I just don't know how that works with a private drive versus a township home road or. Like, how do we enforce anything like that?
You don't, you can't really enforce it, but um, because it's a private drive, but it can be addressed, as suggested.
The question.
Question too, but just from my knowledge, this variance about the lot density.
Depending on how you look at the law, if you look at it from Stony Brook, it's certainly more than three hundred feet. Right, that's a private road, so why is that coming into?
Typically, typically, your lot depth is off of public. So that's all.
Okay, so then it's the narrow section that's not correct.
It gets tricky when you start looking at flybys.
Which kind of lends, you know, credence to why we might grant that variant. One way, it's.
In the first place, because logically it's off the study book, but it's not, it's off the level, so.
It just have to amend that motion to include, or especially points that we just had.
Uh, I made that motion, so I will amend my motion to include. Um, the two variances from two thousand and two. Um, and the um. And the um.
Changing condition A.
Changing the condition A to a good faith effort. Do.
I essentially just have to give him.
Right.
Any further discussion points? Yeah, Paul, Paul. Yes, is it if the apartment moving application, no? It's not, and abstain is sustained.
Paul, you're.
Uh, let me part of that two thousand and two board, so. I think Chris Wilder might have been with me, actually. Uh, I'm gonna say yes.
Jose Abraiz.
I'm gonna say.
Brian Messing.
Yes.
Jose Mideros.
Yes.
Philip Bellin.
Yes.
Brad Nelson.
Yes.
Ken Shalay.
Yes.
Jeff Coletti.
Yes.
Steve Di Lorenzo.
Yes.
It's passed.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody, appreciate it.
All right, so the resolution will be for our next meeting.
Thanks. No answer, let me do this. Come on, Stan, you can do it. Already started, so why? Got a curveball. So. Not like anything, do you know? Respond back in the church. Hey, no. I thought I felt. No, that's similar. You're wrong, you're the next.
Okay, no, no, this was.
That was. You didn't get it.
No, I thought it's all good.
Oh.
That actually matters.
You know, this little. What a wonderful agreement. Very great. Good to you guys.
All right. We have one more item tonight.
Five.
All right. Well, we have a uh block thirty six, block fourteen. Is. An informal review. Awesome. Just three Morgan Lane. Their representative here, or. Yes. Is there a podcast?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's in the binder under new business with the yellow, yellow.
You get a look, yes. Okay.
All right. Yeah, I got it, I got it. I'm just saying, no, uh, front of it.
Have a good evening.
But what's everything that's in front of the yellow tag?
That was deceptive.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so. Yeah. Yeah, 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 there's your model. That's okay, I got it, all right, so, so Mr. Parkaski went and stored the zoning officer. Um, on a piece of property that he purchased. And uh he's looking to put that property or has put that property into um forestry management. And. Um. We have the paperwork from the state on that. Um. In that, but uh so part of the. Standing rules is a re-year timeframe before uh the tax benefit of farmland assessment takes hold. And Mr. Parkaski is looking at, he'd like to build a building. Um, to store equipment and vehicles approximately thirty by seventy feet at current time. Is that pretty much time horizon?
Yes.
Okay, wanna give us a little background on the property, do you own it, is it under contract?
Okay, so I purchased this property in March of this year. Actually, happened on on my birthday on the twenty sixth. So that was a a nice gift for me to myself. Uh, I turn into the, I enroll into the farm, uh, tend this property, it's all wooded area. Uh, and. For me to. Do all the requirements. I would need, I would like to have some kind of a storage building there so I can store my equipment. So that's basically what it is.
So, all right, so you're looking at, this is forestry management?
Yes.
What what are what's, what are what are those, what are those requirements? For, for the forestry management?
Okay, so.
About how many trees a year, is it every year, is it every five years?
Every every year. Every year, uh, uh, I have to. I have to remove some trees and uh. Focusing mainly on the on the dead ones. And also on the ones that are uh invasive. And on the other invasive vegetation.
All right, do you, do you, are these trees marked by you, is it a state forester that comes in?
Uh, yeah, he 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 marks it, yeah, he marks it.
What's the size of the lot?
Excuse me?
Eight and a half.
How 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 large is the lot?
Uh. It's a little over eight acres, eight and a half.
Right, um, so who? Who is gonna be cutting these trees down, is it yourself?
Yes.
Okay. What kind of equipment do you need stored there?
Uh, tractor. So for the. Moving the 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 lags, then I have the small excavator which uh I I I use for that. Then uh uh trailers. Then I also like to maybe uh reuse some of the wood. Uh, using the woodmill, so I like to do that also instead of just putting everything to a firewood. Uh. Couple other small stuff, wood chipper, uh.
Can I help focus this, please? I I think. You're you're here for an interpretation, you wanna know if you can have an accessory structure on your property.
Yes.
Right? And the property you you currently applying for farmland assessment, I don't think the details matter. You're applying for farmland assessment, but if it's granted, it won't be in effect for two years. And so the question the zoning officer had was whether she can grant you this agricultural. Uh, this accessory building without you applying for variance, does that seem like the question?
Uh, well, the. The property enrolls and it starts from January first, twenty twenty six. The the break uh on on the taxes uh kicks in in twenty twenty eight.
Right.
But. The property is already in the plan from the January first of twenty twenty six.
Okay, but but you wanna put a structure on the land?
Yes.
And there's no structures on it now?
Nothing there, yeah.
And the land does not abut um any public roads, correct?
And uh. I don't know exactly, I don't understand that issue, it it it's got a fifty foot uh access to the property.
Yeah, the zoning officer says it doesn't uh abut a public road, so this access is through somebody else's property, right?
Through the right of way, yes.
Okay. And so the question she had for us that she wasn't able to answer is whether she can issue you a permit for this. Uh, accessory building now, because it's not officially farmland assessed and. Because it doesn't abut a public road, or whether you need to apply for variance, that's really what it is.
But. Okay, so we even bought a fee on that, and you have an accessory structure on the house, on a property that doesn't have a primary structure.
That's, I understand.
Yeah. So that that's, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a variant, so you would need to apply for a variant, so. Did the answer no, but then you'd have to apply for variant, so he's here looking for some guidance, which.
If it's agriculture or 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 land program, you don't need a primary structure.
No, that's what I was just gonna say.
You 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 have a law.
Official.
I know, yeah, you you can have a barn without having a house on a decent.
But doesn't become officially farmed assess as of January. No, right, we're we're going to this with a plan, gentlemen. So it's not until the tax benefit kick in that's like. Correct. So he's gonna be assessed, the twenty sixth and twenty seventh would be assessed normal. In twenty eight, or farmed assessed.
What's the difference between a forestry plan and a farmed test, do they go in in the end, you have to have both? I mean, to be the.
Well, forestry management is a type of a land assessment. So instead of growing corn, weed, he's growing trees.
And then typically. The size of the location, that's not where we're just where we're, that's not the current question is, anything like that's. Can build one before I'm active.
If the zoning officer has some questions and the applicant has some questions. My general feeling is that this board should be careful about what they say in the absence of an official application. Uh, because um people like this gentleman here may rely upon something without us really knowing what the question is. And so I'm hesitant to say a lot other than you should seek an attorney, discuss these issues. And it would probably be better if you came back with an attorney if. And if the attorney can advise you whether a formal application should be filed, whether the attorney wants to seek out more of the informal review. I just am reluctant to tell this board to say much, we don't really know what the question is. But. And it would be fair to, you know, have our zoning officer here too, if it becomes a more formal question. That's what I suggest.
Well, I I agree with that. I mean, because we don't have a question, we don't have any maps to show us where everything is or anything like that, so we can't really rely on.
Right.
On any information, um, and no testimony, we're different. So, I mean, yeah.
And and informal review under the MLUL states. Um, this is forty fifty five D dash ten point one. At the request of the developer, the planning board shall grant informal review of a concept plan for a development for which the developer intends to prepare and submit an application for development. So this gentleman would have to explain that he intends to submit an application and you have to give us a little concept, some scratch out a little bit. I I don't I don't think we have even enough for an even formal view of the present time.
If you know, you I I I'm sorry, I had a question, so it seems like, I thought the question was, does he need a formal application? He's questioning, the the zoning officer did not make a determination. Uh, and. Because there is a process that that is, so he went to the zoning officer, he goes, I said, I believe you need a variance, he questions it. That's very clear, we'd have an attorney with him who recommended, but he can do it himself. But this owner officer didn't make a determination, so I think what he's looking for is this board make a determination. Of, does he need a variance? Or does he not need a variance? Does he need an application? Does he not need an application? Based on the facts that he's presented.
Wouldn't. Wouldn't, I guess, I guess. Let let's let's. As a hypothetical, let's say that it's a farm, an eight acre farm that wants to build a barn. What are the rules there, whatever?
As I said, this was two years from now, that you wouldn't be here.
Yeah, right, I agree, I agree.
He could just build, yeah.
Basically, I guess the question is, do we do do we let him build now without? Again, the the farmland assessment is a taxation specific component. Um. But I think it also. For the taxation side, I think it. It's designed to make sure that people are serious about what they're doing, because they don't get any tax benefit for that property.
Um, yeah, I think you'd wanna be careful about putting the cart before the horse. I mean, if the, again hypothetically. You don't wind up, for whatever reason, using the land in the way that you intend and the farmland. Uh, the fourth agreement winds up going away. But now you've built the structure because we said, hey, good faith, we're gonna let you go ahead, because we think in two years, we're always true, now you just got. A a piece of land with a building on it and no management, uh, no forestry management plan in place. Um.
And the lead like, oh, you're right.
Perhaps, and then the lead. Uh, perhaps the recommendation would be to, I I would have had conversations generally with the zoning officer, I've told her, if you're unsure, deny. Right, that's that's fallback position, and then it defaults to this board. I would suggest that probably tell her, uh, deny, and then he can take a appeal of that. Bring in his testimony and his sketch plan, and we can have a formal, a more formal review. And if a denial appeal is cheap, no. Um. Get coming with her with that in turn. But he's not the only.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he's the only.
Yes, I'm the only one.
Okay.
So, so. If I, if I, if I. Somebody is building a barn. Uh, they fall into then the, the um. The 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 authority of the agri, the agri. Development C A D, the county agricultural development.
Only if it's commercial, or only if it's for, what the word is, but.
It's not. No other, what your, you know, in the farmland, I think if you're living as a reservation management plan. It's a right to farm, I should, so.
Yeah.
Really, uh, if we deny, uh, he has the right to go to the county farm act board. So I disagree with the township and the farm act board, uh, in advocate for them.
Okay, that that and that's that's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah.
So I I I, that's what I was getting at, is that somebody has. Other authority besides us when it's a farm.
Correct.
Yeah, that's that's what I was getting at, yeah. So. But but that only happens once he actually becomes farmed assessed and basically a wood farm, right?
I don't know, the county act has a a plan, good bars, where so the county, you know, county act board may recognize them, yeah. The farmer and advocate, yeah.
But in that case, he doesn't need anything from us.
Well, he he would have to deny, and then we would have to go with our attorney and myself or somebody else would go with the attorney. I've gotten, I've done this before. And then the county act board makes sure that the decision is usually in favor of the farm. And then we all come back, you can build what you want.
Right, okay, but.
Let's just share fifteen years of experience.
Yeah, 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 and that's that's what I'm looking for is, yeah, because I don't know what what the actual rules are, that's what I was trying to.
We've had egregious violations of land use that the county act board is upheld. So. You can, I give a little.
Yeah.
Old farm, I'm trying to drop the. And it's not a bad idea to join, it's like a hundred bucks a year. And they have attorneys down there, give you a lot of.
Okay, well, uh. Hmm.
Back to uh what you just mentioned before, that after a year, I, everything can fall out and the building is there already. That actually can happen on the third year also, so there is no. You know, i- i- insurance for for that when, if any, or at all if it's gonna happen. So there is uh no, you know, no one can predict, nothing like that. So it can happen in the first year, it can happen on a third year or fourth year. Uh. The. I, all I'm looking for is just, uh. If 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 permission to for me to 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 put that structure there.
If, if, I have another thought here. I I, as I mentioned, the mayor and chairman earlier, that this is a board of limited jurisdiction, really, there's only a couple of things you can do. Review applications for development, which are subdivisions and site plans, and deal with uh building and zoning permit denials. This is basically a building or zoning permit denial question, it is not a application for development, it's not gonna be subdivision, it's not gonna be a site plan. So I think it's premature, so I think informal reviews are really intended for site plans. And subdivision, where somebody says, hey, I got this lot, I'm thinking about chopping it up, what do you guys think, generally, and then you tell them. It's not for appeals of discretionary decisions by the zoning officer. And I think the zoning officer just has to say yes or no. Probably no here, and then he needs to file a formal zoning appeal. And he can bring whatever information he wants at that time, but I really don't think it's right, I think informal reviews are really for site plans and subdivisions. But this is not, this is not of those.
Um. If you get promised assessment approved.
I'm already approved. Oh, no, the the uh for the taxes purpose.
He's approved, you're right.
He's approved, so why are you here? As a farmer.
So it doesn't.
You know, two years.
It's a two year.
Could be.
But you can, this is a two year delay, I don't. You can, this is a two year delay and those officials.
Between this implementation, it's a taxing policy, you know, mess up.
What happens two years from now? Some, someone will certify that he did something?
Well, that he's got this, this.
Yeah, but he just kinda said that in year three or year four, it could go away as well, right? So the cleanest way for him to get what he wants, to not just file an application for the variances, they would need to build a building. And us to hear the application, and then if the forestry thing goes away.
Yeah.
You're good.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, because, because the thing is, is that this could be like a backdoor way to just build a building. You know, you say you're gonna be farm, farmland assessed, you get your farmland assessment, you get some. Some, uh, uh, forestry management plan, you build your building, and then you abandon it, and you have your building. And now you have a storage building on a, on a piece of property.
If we're keeping it. By, by doing the variances.
It would be a D variance.
Yeah, it's not a use variant, but by going with, like, I mean, staying with the farmland side, if he doesn't get his inspections. And certifications every year by the tax assessor who verifies all of this, then. Would lose that, would lose that protection.
Can, can you issue a? Uh, let's face it, permit or approval. Uh, like connected to the woodlands management, so that's within ninety days of no longer being, if, if a rural woods management plan, the building must be removed.
There you go.
We've done that with, um, South hours.
I mean, that, that, yeah, that, that would.
So issue the farming with that condition.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be.
Building, so you can take it down, do what you want with it.
That's probably the best way to end it, cause I don't think it, it, it would be a variance application, because as you said, it's. Or unless you can put it on, what, what do we?
Right, and, that, that's.
I think, yeah, I think that's a good solution.
Yeah.
I think we gotta be careful. Those previous things that happened, somebody might get mad. That they didn't get what they wanted. And, uh, so, I don't know, I, I would later to get.
Well, but, I mean, again, that's not a permanent structure, that. It's a temporary.
This other one wasn't a permanent structure either.
Which one?
I don't, I don't wanna get this point, but. You still want the zoning officer to die.
Correct.
And then appeal and, on that appeal, potentially could then say, put it up with this condition.
Exactly, we don't know what the size or anything, as you were saying, so. More specifically, um, yeah, I think we, we recommend that she, uh, deny it and then let him make a formal. Uh, building appeal. And then it can be heard that way, it's definitely not a variance issue.
So, you understand what he's saying? So what he's saying is that, that we're gonna have the zoning officer deny you.
Now you're permitted.
Say that you can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're gonna appeal to us. To, and you're gonna bring to us a plan that shows where the building is gonna go. And how big it is and, and all that, and a, and a map that shows the property so that we can look at it.
Side plan.
Well, it's plenty of room over there, so it's gonna be within the setbacks, and all I'm looking is for thirty by seventy.
Yeah, you're gonna bring all that testimony to us when it's right before us, right now, it's not right, because this is an informal discussion. And we're gonna correct her to deny the permit, and then you come back and you can tell us anything you want on the appeal, anything you want. But we're suggesting you bring a little more information if you. That's all, I think you're hearing some positive things here, but I think we have to follow a different process.
That's the informal part of it.
Yeah, exactly.
That's gonna make it formal, but. A little bit easier than a full variance. Or you may, you may need, you may need a full variance as well, so we, we need to go back to the zoning officer. Deny, and then.
We're, we're gonna.
We're gonna tell them, okay, we're gonna tell her.
They'll get, they'll get something.
Yeah.
And then that, and then you have to formally appeal that, come back here for a formal.
They'll have a form for you to fill out, so you're appealing her decision. And then when you come back, just try to bring in, you know, as much information as you can. Yeah, e- even if it's struggles that you're doing on your own, give us some information, or if you have a whole barn like the mayor was suggesting. If you have some dimensions on that for the manufacturer, let me actually bring some more information.
You can figure out some way to make this scale, like, like, figure out what the. Scale is, we know the actual size, and then tell us the, how to be, you know, or from the property line, I mean. Best out professionals, but, but, but not, you can, you can replicate the work of a professional as close as you can for us to make a. Formal decision, we, we, we don't know enough.
Yeah, well, that was just for, just for, just to give the idea of. It doesn't show any setbacks, but that, obviously, I, I got plenty of room there to, to, to be included.
So, if, if you draw it like right in the middle of the property. Then there's no question that about the setback, right? So that's what we're gonna wanna see, we're gonna wanna see where it is on the property.
Well, I like to stay, um, I, I don't even know what the setbacks are, fifty feet?
That's what you gotta look into, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so fifty, if there is a fifty feet, so that, that's plenty, so I don't wanna go so deep into the property, because. Later, uh, maybe I build me a house there, it is just, uh. I like to maybe at some point of time.
Bring all that information to us next time, alright? It would be appropriate then, right now, it's not right. For you to give us the details, we're telling you what we think you should do, I think you're hearing some positive from your perspective, so if you can do that. Then you can be heard fully.
Alright, but do I need a lawyer for that?
That's your decision, nobody up here can give you legal guidance, I think you have to just think about what everybody said and determine if you think you can handle that on your own. Um, but we can't tell you, you have the right to have an attorney, it's not required. Your choice.
As long as you can figure out what the, what we require as far as setbacks and everything, though.
Yeah, if you are, after you sat through tonight's, um, here. You understand that the owners of property didn't, didn't have to say anything, there's. The people that they have working for them were able to explain everything. So sometimes it, it is a good idea to have. Representative for you.
And a good question, so do you own this property in your name, or does this?
Yes.
It's not in a business name right now, that's.
No, my personal name.
Right, so.
Me and my wife's.
So that's your choice for the end of the turn, yeah. It's a bit, you require to have an attorney.
Correct.
Yeah. So, so just, go through the code book. And that'll tell you what your setbacks are, okay? Right, and then you can, and then you can decide where exactly you wanna place that building, okay? And then you should show us, and then.
Right, I didn't get that information from the zoning yet, we, we got, I, I got stuck at the, uh. Possibility of building.
Right.
Uh, but now I'm gonna get all the information of the setbacks and everything, a- and, and I'll be able to. Set that building where, where I really want it.
It's on the hatchet website, you can, yeah, search through the code on the hatchet, so Bethlehem J that orders, and you can search through.
Yeah, okay.
And, and you want, you know, what kind of zone he's in. We seen the, you're in the Mount Residential, right?
And, and, and one more question?
It is, no, it is Mount Residential, um.
Right. So that, that tells you where you have to look for your rules.
Right.
It is a land loss, deed of parcel, so there is a, there's easement over the neighbors of property. So I don't know if that comes into play here, like.
You can consider at least consulting with an attorney.
The, the taxic website has a section called municipal, not have those setbacks. If you search through there, I'm searching.
And also, the, the type of the building I can put it, I'd like to find out also, is it like a regular stick structure, or, or a?
That's for, that's for you to bring to us, we're, we're, we're trying to tell you.
Okay.
We're, you're not gonna get any decisions from us today, we're telling you what you should do. You're gonna get denied the permit, and you should appeal, and you should insult any challenges, it's up to you. And you should come back here with more information during a formal zoning appeal. This isn't informal, informal is just a discussion, already stated, I don't think it really applies to appeals. Really only applies to subdivisions and site plans, which you clearly don't need to do. I think the, the board's giving you all they can for tonight.
Alright, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, any, any questions, you can reach out to Monica. Or get back, test what you have.
Well, and Sarah's gonna be in touch with you.
So, next steps on this. Are we gonna reach out to Sarah, am I gonna reach out to Sarah? Who, 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 we got the information? Got it, I'm just gonna be sure.
Alright, any questions?
There's a form.
Okay, so move, make motion, go, move, public, sexual, call his pair. On the comment.
Is it funny?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wait. Okay, I, uh, the stony, stony broker, the, before, stony, whatever the name was. And they, they said they had a problem with, um, with getting utilities working there. If, just, if they get J C P N L to, to build a, a distribution. To use the road, right, then J C P N L would have the easement of the road. And give permit to the people that live there too. They didn't come out good. You see what I mean? I mean, they, they own now the easement, all these houses, right? But, uh, they, they don't get in an agreement on working together for maintenance.
Takes the easement over, but they don't, the person who owns that property still owns it. J C P N L doesn't own.
They wouldn't own it, they wouldn't own it if they go and.
If he puts an easement over property, they don't own the property.
Oh.
So you still own the property, the wire might be above you, but you still own the property, there's a limitation of what you can do on your own property, but now J C P N L is not.
They don't own it. Thank you for, for informing my question.
Just one question about that bridge again. If you granted. That homeowner, landowner, whatever, the variances. I'm still looking at the bridge, who's responsible for the bridge?
This is public comment, you cannot ask questions on this application specific when the applicant is not here. And expect an answer from us, so you can.
Can I voice my opinion?
Yes, you can.
I feel like you're not treating our residents right, you write up this. Applicant, the variances, and something happens to that bridge, that bridge is not in great a shape. Uh, we done seppits up that road, we played that road, I just think we need something to protect our residents on that, that's what I'm asking. A suggestion, I should say. And, and you have one other thing?
Somewhere in the town.
Pardon?
A hypothetical bridge somewhere in the town.
Yeah, that's. The last gentleman up. I know on Hacker Road, that guy tried to do a sawmill in his building and the town turned him down, he mentioned a sawmill in, in his building. And it's only eight acres, I think it's still gonna be commercial, that's what I was thinking.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, now whether residents are. In the order, if anybody wants to, make a motion, please.
So move.
Becca, hold the paper. Alright, minutes. Seven seconds.
Make a motion to, for the minutes to prepare.
I, I do have to make one. Thank you, I actually, I was, I don't think I was present.
Could be wrong, that was our last meeting.
And I have a motion to.
No, I just, I have. Any other changes? I just, I said on that motion.
I don't think I, I can read it.
Definitely wasn't.
I have a check on my agenda.
Something I wish I could, and that I had to go to my in-laws, I thought that, that was our last meeting.
No.
I thought you were there, Steve, cause I remember talking to you. I thought Steve was there, I thought I spoke to Steve.
Yeah, sometimes, it was pretty jerky. The only October meeting.
Alright, so she's been seconded over discretion. All in the paper. Stanchions. Mr. Stanchions. Stanchions, well, alright, Mr. Mayor. Anybody remember that? I have quite a few, I think. Monica, have a go.
Definitely my ears important, it's really long.
Becca, second, the mayor, hi.